Better ways of saying some of these questions about rules and responsibilities than I had originally posed. So I just wanted to thank you all for taking time to talk to me the last two days. And again, for great suggestions that include these agendas. So I thought first we should talk a little bit about the cultural statement, the ground rules, your level of comfort with those items, because if, oh, I want to give you the opportunity to make changes and all of that, and then those things would be transferred to this meeting with the mayor and his staff today to talk a little bit about, can they abide by them? Can they live with them too? As we broaden the team from the Senate view to ineligible officials and then to the directors, is this all relevant? So that's what I was wanting to talk about today. And then I purposely broke this down thinking in terms of both the cultural statement and the ground rules, will they help you in terms of communication? Do they help you with leadership? Do they help you move forward as a team? So those are the questions here. I think we should talk about them separately. And I was going to start with the cultural statement, which obviously is a definition of a high-performing council. At our last workshop, we talked in terms of something that will come to fruition by a year from now. And I guess I would just have you also think about, is this something you would put on your website that would communicate your values and what you stand for? Is it something that would have an impact on staff and the mayor as they think about who you all are? Is it something that you could even make copies of at council meetings and again, to signal to the public? This is what we stand for, these are our values, and here's what we're trying to achieve in terms of how we work here. So that's the opening, and I'm going to let you take it from here, so thinking about this cultural statement.
Oh, the beautiful morning.
So, number four, collaboration is guided by agreement on the seven goals that constitute our highest prayers for the year.
Are you looking at the ground rules? I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at the cultural statement.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Are we on the cultural statement?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That, I think, is really important, and I hope that we determine the time that we're going to sit down and figure that out for this year, because I think there are, we have many commonalities that we can set an agenda for the rest of the year. And I really like that, I think it's a great idea to, and I like the idea of focusing not on everything, but, you know, picking out things that we can accomplish and focus our time and energies on that will be to the public's benefit. I think that's a really important piece of this cultural statement. And also, in the last sentence is really important too, it allows us to provide clear direction to the mayor and his staff so they can accurately understand our vision and what we intend and expect.
I have a problem with quite a few of these.
On the cultural statement?
Well, not, I mean, some, I should say. Okay, well, the third from the last, you know, there are a lot of citizens, and I know each of us also have constituents that trust us and therefore say things that they know that are in confidence. And so my opinion is, I don't want to, I don't think that it's necessary that we need to put that in writing, but I do believe that we should all use our own discretion as to what, I mean, if people don't want to talk to you, they don't talk to you, but if they want to talk to you, then use, you know, talk to them in confidence, that should be allowed, because that's part of your reason why you're a good counselor.
I disagree with that now, and I'll tell you why. I think it's okay for people, citizens, to feel free to talk to us about issues, and talk to us, maybe they can talk to me, Tom, about issue, and they can't talk to me about an issue.
Right.
I think that's important.
That's what I'm saying.
But this is referencing just conversation about colleagues. And so I think, I think that is not appropriate. I like the idea that Jim brought up of telling a citizen, you know, I don't want to talk about Strom's personality. You need to contact Strom, you have an issue with Strom, but I will talk about the issue.
I'm not personalizing it, what I mean is that someone may come up to me and say, I agree with Joan and her opinion about Sunset, I think she's a very strong person, and I think that I would agree with her. So I'm strictly, I'm not personalizing any of this, all I'm talking about is some people will come up to me and say either positive or negative things strictly relating to council issues. And I don't say, I can't talk about Joan because, you know, I don't want to talk about Joan. But I mean, they're actually saying, I like her opinion, I like what she said, I liked how it was scoped out, you know, things like that. It's not, I'm not, we're not talking about her dress or her beautiful teal shirt.
No, but if somebody comes up to you and says, you know, that Joan, she's just, she's so crazy because she wants to put a view room on City Hall, you know, I think that's crazy. I don't know what's wrong with her. What would your response be, I guess?
I would say, well, if that's the case, you should probably talk to Joan.
See, then you, I would say you'd be abiding by that rule.
Right.
If you said it like.
Maybe there's just a, we can add, we can not talk personally about each other.
Right, I mean, I'm just trying to.
Maybe there's just some wordsmithing in here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say that I hear a lot of positive and negative things, and like, my issue is, I pretty much want citizens to realize that they can confide in me with whatever they want to say.
But not gossip with you, I guess that would be the difference.
But this is not.
It's not personalizing or gossiping.
Well, no, no, but I mean, that would be a good way to state this, is that if they want to talk to you about things, that's fine, I think that's important. Can I say one thing? This came from, I believe, when, last time we met, you brought up Val Stewart, and then she saw me as, I don't remember what you said, and I had a reaction to that. So I guess when I see.
Passionate, what I said was passionate, and I said, please talk to Joan.
Well, let's just back up a minute, okay? So, you know, what you said about it being in confidence, you didn't hold it in confidence.
She didn't say this is in confidence.
No, 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 I'm saying you did, you actually said that on camera.
Well, I didn't want it to, but I didn't want it to be on camera. I've never wanted this to be on camera.
Diane, all I'm saying is that I think this is about, this was in reaction to that, that there was a comment made by a public member to you, and you brought it up in this group on camera in front of all of us, so you did not hold it in confidence.
But she didn't, she didn't indicate.
It's not, this isn't about the details, I'm saying that this is why we, Jim, could you help me out here? Isn't this why this was put on here?
I would just say that it's, I think that might be one example, but I think that everybody kind of agreed that that happens with all of us, that people come up and.
Yes.
And they want to talk to us, and they want to, you know.
Back to somebody else.
Constituents, and they, and that it's, now is the time for us to just, when that happens, just say, you know what? And that's, I think a lot of us have been doing that, and I think that's what this is about, and some of the reactions that I've had from citizens are like, well, well, like when Dave Page stood up the other day, he was like, I always thought you guys were crazy for getting into this, but I watched it, and, okay, good. So I think that's where we are now, and I think that, so I don't want to get too much into the specifics, because I think that may have been the specific example, but I think it was pretty endemic to the whole, just thing that's been going on for the last, you know, couple of years, or even, I think even a few years.
Just in the interest of time, I'm going to jump in off or something. Listening to you, I'm wondering, would you be comfortable if the opening sentence was, we are open and accessible to our constituents to discuss issues, and then you followed it up with these three sentences? So that it does meet your interest of being available to people to talk about issues? Because I hear you were saying, if someone came up and complimented Joan for a position that she's taking on an issue, in some respects, you could, you could actually not even mention her name, but you could comment on the issue yourself as well, or you could say, yeah, I agree, but I think her leadership on this issue has been great, that's very positive.
Right.
Maybe if we just put that in as a first sentence, that would assure everybody that you're totally available to your constituents to talk about issues. It's just that what we're trying to get away from is the gossip with.
Right, right.
About colleagues.
Hi.
I don't think you got the memo that we're starting in May 45.
Was there a memo on that?
No.
I don't think there's a memo.
There was no memo.
There's been a big.
That's all right.
So, I mean, would you like, would you leave?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to, because when you just read that, you're just like, you know, I mean, it's, first of all, it's a very negative way to start the thing off.
That's a good point, yeah.
And then, you know, my issue is basically, I mean, like Strom, I mean, I'm sure Strom has lots of, I mean, I'm in all over, every different areas and stuff, and I just think that people should realize that they can still talk to us.
If I may, keeping that in mind, on the second page, the third one down, since we're at number, it begins with a negative statement as well, we do not make decisions behind closed doors. So it's, I like the intent of that statement, but is there a way to say that positively as opposed to say negatively?
Decisions are made in open environments.
Well, I don't think we can make decisions in, behind closed doors.
No, we can't, that's why we should.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I like the intent of what it says, it just, there must be a positive way to say that same statement.
Yeah, we make decisions in open.
Or maybe just all decisions use the first sentence at all.
Yeah, would change, publicist, decisions are made openly and publicly.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Keep going, I appreciate that you're trying to make this all very positive. Anything else?
Well, I've always had an issue, I think we should, we all can call each other and take each other out for coffee lunch or break, I think we should just say, I've always had a, you know, I think we should just leave it to call each other or whatever and socialize. Because different people take different.
Oh, this guy is important.
I don't want the public to think they're having a drink.
Well, no, you know, rule number five in my book is never have a glass of wine on Facebook. Well, that got on camera, that got on camera too, so, so I just think that, you know.
Or you just want to eliminate the second sentence entirely, and it's really up to you how you do that?
I would have it be fine.
How about, we know each other better, how about we strive to know each other better and respect one another more?
That's good, yeah.
Do you want to put something in there too about social, social events are encouraged or, I don't want to say social events, it's not really good, but, I think encouraged, I think short is the word. Yeah, but what does that sentence say then?
It does signal like, if, somebody is not you, if I'm the public, I think it does signal that you are really trying to try to know each other better and respect each other. So that would leave it for like, any way that you want to try to achieve that?
You can do it socially or antisocial. Maybe you have a choice. It's free, there's no freedom.
It's true.
Sure, it's on the, that's the bullet.
H2?
H2.
It must be.
I think the way it printed out maybe is a little different, so, the bullet I have on the bottom of first page, or at the top of the second page.
Is it the one, citizens, is that?
Yes.
It seems like there's, there's the balance of the citizens, which obviously they are the citizens that are influential in our decision-making process, but there's also a certain point where I think as elected, part of being elected, they're influential and they wrote for us and put us into office because of our views and our campaigns, and so at some point, there has to be, I won't say there has to be, I would like to see some statement about leadership, and we're elected to make decisions, and if not everything that comes to council, you know, we need a kind of a public referendum or, you know, a vote of another vote, that there's just certain issues that I think we're elected to make decisions.
Is the bullet point before that, Strom, really more reflective of what you're trying to say? Because maybe we don't even need that one if we really focus on bullet point number four.
We have the first page and the second page.
Well, it's bullets, we're now looking at these bullet points, number four and five, so one is, our collaboration is guided by agreement, and then the next one is the spaces.
Okay, so it's my first, second question.
I actually feel that's an important one to include.
Number four and number five?
Oh, both of them.
All right.
But number five, I think it's important to include because of the fact that.
Oh, I don't want to get rid of it.
I was asking.
Oh, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, oh, I don't want to get rid of it, I'm just looking for.
And my question of him was, is what he's trying to say included in number four?
Oh, I see, okay.
But it's not that Jim, you think they're a little bit separate and important.
Oh, no, I'd like.
I think it's important to highlight that that's what our decisions are based on, is our best judgment, you know, that in other words, the citizens of evidence definitely inform our decisions.
And I think probably number four would cover.
Yeah.
Do you want to find a word, a way to incorporate the word leadership though, but doesn't appear here?
I would like to, just in conversations that I have, but that's kind of what a lot of people ask of me when I'm talking to them, they're busy, they're, they're not paying specific attention to a lot of issues, and I, it's like, oh, you, I voted for you, or I didn't vote for you, but you're in.
Would it help you if it, if bullet point number four said, our leadership and collaboration is guided by a agreement?
I, yeah, I think that would actually probably do.
What do others think about that?
It's a good way to incorporate it.
Our leadership and collaboration is guided by.
It's guided by what?
By, just to continue, by seven goals, seconds.
Oh, you're back on number four now?
Number four, yeah. So just to get to that point that Strom's trying to make, which I think is a good point, that we are supposed to be leaders, we're supposed to be listeners, but also leaders.
So here's where we are now, no change to one or two. Number three will say, we strive to know each other better and respect one another more, done.
No drinking.
You don't want to go that far. I said that. And then the next one would be, our leadership and collaboration, and then the next change would be to the one that started previously by saying, we do not make decisions behind closed doors, I would say, decisions are made openly and publicly. And go down four more, something like, we are available and accessible to talk to our constituents about issues, we do not talk personally about each other with members of the public, and so if that word person, because I think that's what I'm trying to call them. Anything else at all, otherwise this is something you can all live with and even present to the mayor and department directors? Okay. Should we cover the ground rules, and you want, I'm going to call on you first?
I am prepared, although I have it really prepared, so I wrote it down today. First of all, I want to thank Jim Reid for helping us, because I know you've gone way over your time that you allotted for us, I know. I also want to thank Jeff, because I know you have spent many hours listening to us. I also want to thank everyone for their candor that we've, you know, we've had these last couple of days, or these last couple of workshops. I have many concerns about the ground rules, as to me, they're brainstorming ideas. I also feel that there are too many of them, and that some citizens or others may take them literally, so rather than have a cloud hanging over our head, I would rather like us to think about it more positively and have a positive life, because positive energy always brings positive results. I felt it's important that we give everyone the benefit of the doubt and start over, and not be too specific or detailed, as we all have busy lives outside of the council, and those lives are very detailed and complicated. I also realize that all of us have made mistakes, and we wish we could have not said what we said, or said it the wrong way, or said it at the wrong time, but that is what life is, and that is how we lead our lives. And to me, I try to lead each day being positive and moving forward, forgiving the past as those days are gone, their history that we've woven into the tapestry of this city. So I would prefer that we engage in moving forward in a professional manner, and perhaps become beholden to a motto, as it is more simple and easy to understand. And my motto, which I would suggest, would be, treat others as you wish you wanted to be treated. So thank you for letting me express that.
Do the things we just talked about in the color, do they, because as I read the ground rules, some of the same ideas are expressed in the ground rules? Yes.
Diane, would it be good enough if you just add the golden rule to the ground rules, or do you not like the ground rules at all?
No, like I said, when I, I think that these are, first of all, too many, and I think that some people will literally, I mean, it would be like a cloud hanging over our head, and like, someone will come along and say, oh, you, you did number nine. And to me, it's, it's like, I think we should just clean a slate and just move forward and just think about what has gone on, and that we just treat each other as if we, how we would want to be treated, and not worry about all of these different ground rules, because I know that eventually, you know, like, some people do in fact read things differently, interpret things differently, and it's just, it's like, would be, to me, a cloud hanging over our head, and we just did a nice cultural statement. I'd kind of like to seek ground rules, although I do think some of these are redundant. But one of the reasons why is because it hasn't worked, and there have been problems because there have been no ground rules. You know, we've had a whole number of issues because nobody seemed to have any improvement on what we should or shouldn't be doing in regards to us as human beings, I guess. So I think, at least for now, this would be a good place to start, and then maybe six months or a year from now, we look at this and go, you know what, we're doing okay, we don't really need these, but I think in light of everything that's occurred in the last six months to a year, we probably should, I believe we should have some level of ground rules. Do we need this many? I don't think so, and I think you're right, there's way too many of them, and we can maybe see what matches into the cultural statements and get rid of those ground rules, but some of these, I find to be very important, like, restrict the use of email to exchange factual information, not to, not to use to argue and criticize, to, I mean, I think that's an important statement.
Well, that's in your cultural statement.
Then, what, so maybe that?
No, that's not my.
But if it is, I don't, I don't want to argue with it, because if it is, then. Never mind, I guess.
That's a factual statement.
I feel like.
You don't have to argue with it.
I know, I can't say that it's a statement now.
It is, it is.
So thank you.
That is a cultural statement.
So it is a little bit.
Isn't there a? Mr. Head? You're on, Dan?
Anybody else?
Couple of things, I think, I agree that we can narrow it a little less and make it, make them very, just kind of very concise. I think the, and we talked a little bit about this, I think, item number two, on the ground rules, almost seems like that would be a result if we followed all of these ground rules, or that's the result that we're striving for, so I don't see that as a rule. And again, it's kind of in that cultural statement as well. But I, you know, I like, you know, giving each other a heads up, you know, the statement about just being equal participants, I mean, I think I'm kind of with Adrian, that if things had been kind of coming along smoothly, or even just kind of upbeat, that, you know, we probably wouldn't need this, but, and maybe that's, we add one more, and. The goal of these ground rules is to, is to be able to get rid of these ground rules at some point, I don't know. It's like this, you know, this is something we're striving to.
See, how I read the, I mean, literally how I read this, you have, you can't, you can have a rolling quorum if we, if there are to be no surprises. I mean, there's different issues, like I said, if someone literally reads this correctly, then we're making decisions over and above, not in an open forum, because there should be no, no surprises. See, that's my issue, is that some people will literally read this, so either we need to make it very simple and specific, or very generic, or else we're going to get into trouble.
I think maybe a good example of this would be, would be not a rolling quorum, but would be a statement, so and so is going to resign, I'm going, you know, so and so is going to resign, and an email goes out to everybody before it goes public, that's what I'm reading from this, is, it's kind of a heads up to everybody on major issues, not, I wouldn't think this would apply to every issue, but maybe we need to make the statement more specific, I guess, if people are afraid of what they might be held to, but I think, I think the intent of it is to let everybody know so you're not blindsided by.
And these ground rules are intended to be kind of city, not just what we're doing with each other, but citywide in our relationship with the staff and the administration, the mayor.
Well, we're starting with you.
Right.
And if there's some agreement among you, I think it would be important to say to Dave and the directors, right, here are things we'd like to have you come under the umbrella as well.
Because that's how I read number three, and maybe we, maybe Janet's kind of parsing the language, so people don't read it, that we're all going against number, bullet number two or whatever in the ground rules about making decisions behind doors, but closed doors, but I think that, I think number three is important, that, one, the staff doesn't get surprised by something that we bring up on a Tuesday night, or that we don't get surprised by the staff that something pops up in the agenda on a Friday afternoon, that there's some sort of heads up about something that's coming, and maybe that we try to ask staff questions ahead of time and say, you know what, thanks for, I'm going to ask that again in public, because I think the public needs to know so we're prepared to answer, instead of, because there's a sense that, that I think I'm out of the community, that both sides get into this kind of gotcha, you know, I'm going to ask this surprise question on a Tuesday night, or staff is bringing something that we're not prepared for. And I think if we just have that, and we look at this in terms of kind of a citywide group of ground rules, instead of just.
Well, maybe we should get rid of, there are no surprises among us.
And that, yeah, and again, I think some of this could just be language.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's why I have a view of the language, and that's why I said.
Because I see the concern that some people will read it and say, oh, no surprises at all, they're going to talk about all this stuff before Tuesday.
That's an easy correction, so it takes.
Well, Jeff has, Jeff has given us a tool, I mean, it doesn't have to be a rolling quorum. A couple of weeks ago, I sent out an email, something about the composition planning room, or so, it should have been, no surprise to any of you using the BCC, that I might be talking about that that evening, and that was, you know, kind of the intent was to let folks know I had a concern, and Jeff has indicated that we can use the BCC to let folks know we have a concern. So, you know, it's, and it's not a rolling quorum, we deliberate offline, we, you know, it was just, it was just, now everybody gets to know I have a concern, so you're not surprised if I start talking about it. So why not just eliminate there are no surprises, but start with, we give each other a heads up about what we are hearing in the community or.
about what we are hearing in the community or around City Hall and about what we are going to say or do." Or make it more specific to issues, you know, that we're in advance of addressing. You know, just eliminate the "no surprises" and make it more specific to discussion of issues in council.
Could I help address a bit of your concern about this?
Yeah, oh yeah, I didn't like "there's no surprises" because you can always look at things in different ways, how that played out.
May I offer a suggestion? I just was going through this and trying to match it to the cultural statement and so... And just to get us somewhere. So number one, I really like number one. I think that's a good one. You know, we're equal participants and just declaring that, that we all, you know... And we should honor each other for that. And so I think that's a really good thing. Number two, I agree with Sean that that's a goal. It's really not a ground rule. This is what we're trying to achieve and where we're going. Number three, if we take that and amend it, to take out that first phrase, that we give each other a heads up about where we're going, what we're doing, that we're not trying to, you know, sneak in around someone, but we're being open about who we are. I like number four, that we assume the best intentions about one another, that all of us really are doing what we're doing because we love Edmonds, we want the best for our city. We may take different roads to get there, but let's all assume that that's our goal. I think number five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 are all basically stated in the cultural statement. So that makes rules, at least from my view, that are all there. I like number 11.
You mean about the cultural?
About five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Yeah, where do you see them?
Well, I can't point to a sentence in the cultural statement, but I think that if you take the cultural statement as a whole and you take those five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, those six items as a whole, that those things are basically there. So I'll use it, but do not lecture or posture. You know, if you look at the cultural statement, there's nothing in there that says do not lecture or posture. But if you take the intent of the cultural statement, it's about not lecturing and posturing. You know, it's what it's about. The use of hyperbole is really related to posturing. I said, "Well, how possibly could you think that?" Anything was... You know, there's a posturing statement. You know, that's a posture. So... But I think the intent of the cultural statement is that don't do that to your colleague. So, but I can't point to them. And, you know, it's inherent that we're going to disagree. I mean, that's just an inherent part of it. So, you know, we're going to vote on things, we're going to decide, and then we got to move on from that. I do think 12, 13, and 14 are also inherent in the cultural statement. You know, again, I can't point to the right sentence. Well, the email one is clearly in there. So they're there. But number 15, I would keep, you know, the council, the president's, because they're all working for you to say so. So, you know, we need to have the freedom to speak up. And then when someone does speak up, we need to honor that. You know, they have a right to do that. It's not working for them. Now, it doesn't mean that they're going to get their way, but they certainly have the right to speak up. And then if there's, you know, we need to vote on it or if we can mitigate it, then I think we're fine. But so, just to summarize. So what I'm saying is that you got one, an amendment, three, a four, 11, and 15.
Which would leave you with five ground rules.
Right. And plus the cultural statement. You know, I wouldn't be advocating this if we didn't have the cultural statement.
I wouldn't want to see 13, though, wouldn't you?
No, but that's in the cultural statement.
Yeah.
And that is almost...
Perpetual.
It is pretty complicated.
I'm a little concerned about eliminating number two because that's an expansion on agreed-upon goals and priorities. But it also talks about identifying the foundation for agreement before identifying areas of disagreement. And I think that's an important ground rule, rule, number two. I would be concerned about eliminating that. I could see eliminating the first sentence. But I think that talking about, you know, that's also focusing on what we agree on first and then moving to the areas that we may not agree on. I think that's a really good thing to keep in mind and to practice. So I would not want to eliminate that, but perhaps eliminate the first sentence.
So you would start it? We would... We will identify the positions we agree on before identifying number 10?
Yeah, I would just eliminate the first sentence and keep the rest of them.
Tom, I was concerned about eliminating number 10. Do you think number 10 is elsewhere?
Can I make you a proposal? Can I make you a proposal?
Yes, I'm in history and the backstory of Laura bringing something up. I agree that that should be included as well.
I just kind of like it because I'm frustrated with our meeting. I have no idea why we just did it.
Because nobody said why they were doing what they were doing.
And I have to contact you each individually and ask you and try to figure out. And so, I don't know, I kind of like it.
I think I was going to the open and transparent, that we are transparent about what we do, the things we do, both collectively and individually. But I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
You might keep 10?
I think seeing the cultural statement as, you know, essentially what we're striving for and the ground rules as a way to implement it. So eliminating so many of them. I can understand eliminating some of them, you know, like number 13 because it's in the cultural statement. But really, this is elaborating on how we will use... I mean, how we will implement a cultural statement, how we'll be able to do that, so...
So if you were going to eliminate some, Joan, which would you eliminate?
I'd eliminate 13 because it's in the cultural statement. I'd eliminate the sentence of... The first sentence of number two. Maybe tighten it up a little bit so it's shorter. But, you know, most of that, I think, is really important to be in there. Eliminate "there are no surprises" as we've already decided. I'd probably eliminate number five. And number six, I think that we just need to be aware of that. Number seven, I like parts of number seven. And I think it may be hard to implement in council meeting because if somebody doesn't understand what you're saying, we're not allowed to interrupt. You know, we have to... Or they, you know, they seem to be misinterpreting something you said, we're not allowed to interrupt. So it'd be hard to implement, but I think we need to be able to...
I think that's...
Be aware of that.
I think it's represented in, on the second page, bullet point four and five of the cultural statement. Yeah, really talk about number seven.
Tom, tell us which ones you're...
I would demonstrate respect for our colleagues and those with whom we work and aid and make some. We also demonstrate respect for another by listening. So this is... This is the listening issue.
So here's a broad question. We're looking at both of these side by side. This is part of our exercise. When these are kind of put out publicly, are people going to look at them side by side and look at them as too holistic? Or are people going to say, "Well, what did they come up with, ground rules?" And look at things like, "Well, why didn't they have a ground rule on that?" Are they going to reference? I mean, this is primarily for us, but we're a public body. This is going to be on the website or it's going to be...
Can I offer a suggestion?
Yeah.
You'd make it one.
So they title the document "Cultural Statement and Ground Rules", and then they're all together. So it's not two separate documents, it's one document.
With the way you're going to reduce them? I bet... And I typed these a bit bigger just for ease. I bet you could get this onto a two-page document. It's probably cool graphic ways, like, whatever you get it to be. Basically one document.
So then that would match them. That sounds appropriate.
Can I offer a proposal? This is a little bit of trying to achieve your interest of reducing the number and then doing some combining. So I think everyone's finding ground rule number one. And Joan, when you were talking about number two, the second part, I actually thought that you elevated it to a cultural statement, that it's more important than just a ground rule. If you started it by saying, if you were signaling to the public that our approach is always to look for the areas of agreement first and then there may be times where if we can't agree on some pieces, we'll just leave it. I thought that could actually be moved to a cultural statement as opposed to a ground rule, which would get rid of number two. Three would have that one first sentence gone. Sounds like everyone's okay with four. I will say that when I looked at five, six, as I was listening to Tom, I thought, you know, these do come from my background as just a facilitator of a workshop like this or even in sometimes mediating. But I think you probably could get rid of them because of stuff that's in the cultural statement. And I'm not really hearing anyone saying that five and six has to stay. Personally, I kind of like seven, but I also think Tom might be right that it is covered in the cultural statement. I think that Laura's making a good point about 10 because one of the things that came up last week was you were talking about sometimes like kind of almost speaking in shorthand and not providing the full background or context of why it is you're saying something. Now, 10 and four are very much linked and you could almost combine them because it is all about assumptions and providing enough information that people don't make faulty assumptions about what you're saying and why. So if you wanted to, you could even think a little bit about somehow combining those two just to get the number down. And then I think I'm hearing most everybody seems to be still comfortable with 11. And 13 is repeated in the cultural statement? You know, and I'll leave it up to you about 12 and 14 and then that would leave 15. So like maybe we'd end up with like six or seven.
You didn't address 12. I think that's inherent in cultural statement.
I think that's inherent in cultural statement.
I was... The background for that was, I invented that a number of years ago, mediating disputes, because there's this thing that's always attributed to the Northwest where we love process. And if you don't really agree, you just keep obfuscating and talk about process to the point where no, nothing gets done. So this was always a little challenge. Like, if you don't like something and the majority is moving that way, then come forward and tell, you know, something. But I mean, it may not be applicable really to a city council. There might even be Robert's Rules of Orders and things like that that kind of help you there. But anyway, that's the genesis of that.
And I don't think we talked about eight and nine, did we? Eight, I kind of agree, and I can't remember who said this, it might have been Diane, but that lecturing and posturing are not really... I mean, they can be interpreted differently and...
As well as exaggerating.
As well as exaggerating. So I think that, you know, we can always be... You know, this helps us to be aware of that. But I don't think we necessarily need to put it in a statement because how, you know, one citizen may think one of us, because they don't like us, is lecturing or posturing. And one citizen may think somebody else is. Or, you know, we may experience that between us. But it's really open to interpretation. So I would kind of agree with you.
I'm in.
Laura, can you... I'm finding a way.
And so you would eliminate, like, I'm certain that...
Nine.
Nine.
And seven as well? Because is that reflected in the cultural statement?
Now, you are changing the title to read "Ground Rules for the Cultural Statement." Combining the two, is that like Tom suggested?
I would say "and" as opposed to "for."
"And," okay. Combining the two, so that they are...
Yeah. Yeah, because if people don't see the two together, then they just don't make it one document.
So I believe that this point five through nine are gone?
That's it.
Well, 10 is kind of... I thought we were going to combine 10 with four.
I said it was possible. I just wanted to give you that option, but I want you to decide.
I mean, all you need to do is add historical back... I mean, all you need to do is add like the context statement.
To which one?
To four. To four in the cultural statement?
Four, no, just in the ground rules, four and 10, we could probably combine them.
Combine, yeah, okay.
I still don't know what we're doing with four. I would recommend we eliminate it.
I would recommend eliminating...
It's inherent, but I can't point to the...
Where do you see it? How would you see it?
It's covered under the cultural statement. Part of the decision-making process of the new item number, the citizens... With leadership, the citizens of Edmonds are influential and the decision-making views are reflected in, you know, that one. Or even the council's open and transparent, that one as well.
I kind of like four.
I kind of like it, too. I mean, it's only...
Because I think if you're on the...
If it's...
You know, if you're on the... You don't like these, the town rules inside. If you're on a side that doesn't have as many votes.
Minor...
But you want to make a statement as to why. I think this... I think a lot of times, at least I've found myself with, like, okay, it's going to be five-two, I'm going to two. I'll just...
I'll just say, "Give my piece and I'll move on."
Or I won't. But I think it's kind of like, you know, it's okay, it's okay to give your piece and then just...
It's also okay not to give it.
And it's okay not to.
Not to speak, you know, maybe not feeling like talking.
Right. I'll take that as a friendly. Give my piece. So I said my piece and I'll move on.
So would we leave it in there?
Yeah.
Or move it into the cultural statement?
Adrian, I think it seems a little bit kind of different. Because it's a little bit more action. So 11 and... It sounds like 10, 11, and 12 are staying. But 10 may... I'll work on combining 10 and 4.
You know, I kind of want to have them separate because I think they're... One's talking about assumptions and one's talking about context and history. And I think that those are two different things.
I agree with Joan on that. I like it separate. The other thing is, it'd be awfully long if we combined it.
Yeah. I'll take that as a friendly. I'm in. I can do that.
Okay, so I'm looking at the second page. Seven, eight, nine are gone, 10, 11, 12 are staying, 13 is gone.
Six, seven, eight, nine.
Well, I was going to go... I'm sorry, I'm doing it out briefly. Okay, yeah. So five, six, seven, eight, and nine are gone, 10, 11, 12 are staying, 13 is gone.
14.
But 14, is that gone?
Well, because it's already in the cultural statement.
It kind of is.
When we took out the Drayton with the community.
But, and I do think it's...
It doesn't have that cultural statement.
I think it's touched upon on this. It's my second page, item four and five. Do you see that?
I don't yet. I see number 14 as saying, if you're pretty sure somebody isn't going to like it, touch base with them. And I didn't see that anywhere in the cultural statements.
How about item four and five on the second page? "We demonstrate respect for our colleagues. We also demonstrate respect for another by listening."
Yeah, but that says you can touch base with them. I think that's kind of cool. Maybe that could be added to...
Do you think number three is a little bit similar? So... And it's all only ground rules.
What if you're sitting on the fence and you really don't know if you're going to agree or disagree until the night of the discussion and deliberation? I mean, that, to me, that's why you read some of this stuff and you can, you know, again, it'll be hanging over your head and sometimes you're on the fence and you wait to hear what people have to say.
Well, it doesn't say...
Well, they wouldn't apply to that. Yeah, it would just be if you knew.
And I think the difference between the third bullet on the cultural statement and this one is, the third bullet, I think, is about socializing and not talking about city business. It's about...
Yeah, that is more the intent of the third.
And this one is if, if there's a specific issue about city business.
And this one is if, if there's a specific issue about city business.
She swayed me.
I did, cool.
Is the fourteen the same?
Yes.
And fifteen?
I'm okay.
Okay.
With four, I think it's okay.
I just, the only thing that seems still unresolved is, what do you think about the idea that, based on Joan's comments, that we could take the second couple sentences from number two and almost put them as an approach that helps to define you all and put them into the cultural statement? So the approach is to look for the areas of agreement first?
Yeah.
Sure, that was your suggestion, I just...
Well, I got it from you, but I just think you though.
You let him there.
Yeah, you let me there. Now I guess I will, but...
But Joan, take it.
Yeah, really.
Here, we're trying to give you this compliment, you won't.
Okay. So when the meeting starts with the mayor and his staff, I'll just go through this quickly to give them the heads up that some of these things have changed. But then we are going to talk about roles and responsibilities, and then we'll come back to this with them.
This is where you should have a colleague, and you hand this to your colleague, who then types up a new document and then heads it out.
Exactly.
This is, you know, why you got to be more than one person.
Okay. Anything else you just want to say about this today, yesterday, or last week? Kind of what you're accomplishing, anything else that's kind of hasn't been addressed yet?
Related to the cultural statement?
Or just, yeah, how the conversation is going and maybe what you're learning from going through this process, or just, or anything that, again, like you think, forget ground rules or cultural statement and such a thing, and it hasn't really been addressed, that you want to say? We don't have a lot of time left.
Are we not going to talk about our responsibility and authority, those issues, in advance of the meeting with the mayor?
Well, I was worried about time, and so I actually put all of that into the meeting with the mayor and his staff. Because I also thought they would be interesting or helpful, beneficial to them to learn from you, just as they, you know, where you talk about them. And I will say one thing that I was a little bit worried about. I didn't want you to go into that meeting, let's say, completely divided over these items. And so I wanted to spend the time here. Actually, I think this turned out to be a little bit easier. You did a great job on this, but I was a little bit worried that when 10 o'clock arrived, you guys might feel a little bit more...
There's only one thing that I would, you know, I would like to have some clarity about the question that Jeff has been asking ever since I've been in office and maybe before that. How many council members does it take to direct the city attorney? I think that's a really important issue, and I don't know when we're going to talk about that, if not now.
At one point, I had reached an understanding that if it was going to take a meaningful amount of time, the request would have to be read through the council president. But if you have a quick question, Jeff, can we do this on Thursday or not? Then you can just contact Jeff directly. I think it was sort of this, it's kind of a parallel to the rule we agreed to in council members' use of staff time, which was, if it's going to take more than a couple hours, then you need to read it through the mayor's office. If you just want to talk to somebody about, I don't know, the Shoreline Master Program for an hour, then you can just contact staff to do that. So I think they were parallel, rules of thumb that, you know, you get up to a couple hours of anybody's time, and then we got to go through the mayor or the council president. But I'm not sure if anybody else remembers that as being a sort of ground rule.
Well, I think I'm specifically thinking in terms of, you know, drafting ordinance, you know, that. Can any of us just ask him to draft an ordinance?
Well, if I can, based on all the stuff I saw from working on agenda panel, I think Jeff has maybe learned that it's important to run things through the council president and then to him, because his contract was changed by one council member, and none of us knew about it in terms of COLA increases. And I, when I found that out, I was extremely disturbed.
Say what?
We approved his contract. One council member changed his contract to remove COLA increases.
Well, just to be clear.
Or whatever.
It wasn't changed after, after you guys approved it. There was a, there was a negotiation that took place before you approved it by the one council member that led to our contract being different than what was intended when we proposed.
And none of it... I mean, that's...
That's sort of a different issue, I think.
No, but I'm just saying it's important that you can, you know, like, you can't, everybody can't just go and use, you know, I want this done, or I want you to do this, or I want you to, because it really should kind of run through the proper chain.
Well, my point was that do any of us, including the council president, have the authority to direct Jeff to write an ordinance?
I think that's a different issue. And you make a good point, that is such a good point, because you maybe have an idea, and you may be cultivating that idea, and then you want to make sure that what you present is legal. And so, so we should have the ability to sit with Jeff and say, Jeff, I'd like to propose this, our ordinance, and I believe it will pass, and so could you draft that up? Now, do we need to have a vote on whether or not we can go and ask for that? And I may want to just read it myself to see, now, do I really like what this says and sounds like? And so do we have the authority to do just what you say? Because I think that's a good point.
Well, and then, you know, that's, it's happened around the ethics policy where, you know, we weren't in agreement about moving forward with an ethics policy, and, you know, Jeff wasn't going to go ahead and draft the ethics policy. So do any of us, you know, including the council president, have the authority to ask him to write an ordinance in advance of the meeting for a vote?
Maybe ask Jeff, what's your understanding, Jeff?
Yeah.
That'd be an idea.
When you guys use the phrase, "do we have the authority?", you create your own authority for working with me. So I will do whatever the council wants as far as, whatever protocol the council wants to establish as far as working with me is fine with me. I've always asked for protocol to be established, and we've sort of, we have a very loose, as Laura mentioned, we have a loose understanding, which I interpret as, I sort of draw the line between a drafting project and the answering of a question. Somebody calls me or emails me with a question, I do my best to answer the question. A lot of the times, those questions are hypothetical, or not clear, or developed enough to answer definitively, but I do my best to just provide some guidance. If someone asks me to draft something, my response is usually different, because what I don't want to have happen, I think would be, I'll do it, but I think it's an extremely inefficient use of your legal resource. If all seven of you are individually contacting me, directing me to draft this ordinance this way, this ordinance this way, this order, you know, I mean, we can do that, but if you think my, the council portion of my bill is big now, I can't even imagine what it would be like in that situation, because rather than bringing a concept to the council and asking for council direction on the concept, and then bringing back a draft for further council consideration, which I find to be fairly efficient, the alternative, if each of you could individually direct me to draft an ordinance, I could end up drafting ten ordinances, only one of which would ever get approved by the council.
Right, right. So can I just, I mean, at the risk of, and I want to, everybody to assume that I'm doing this in the spirit of understanding, okay? This is related to the ordinance you drafted about the EDC. I mean, that's what I'm referring to. And I'm not understanding why you drafted that ordinance, because that put us in a position of having to, you know, that was, that was like blindsiding us. That was not giving us a heads up, and all of a sudden, we're voting on a...
Let me explain what happened with that. So there were, there were several, there were several different people talking to me about concerns on recent EDC activity. Some having to do with appointments, some question was raised about an EDC member who had recently become an employee, and I was getting all this stuff coming in at the same time. And at the same time, the council president put it on the agenda for, I think, the committee meeting.
PSP.
PSP, yeah. So I took all of that input, created one ordinance, and put it on the PSP committee agenda, figuring that the council could amend it however it wanted to after the PSP committee made its recommendation to the council. That didn't mean that there needed to be a separate drafting exercise after the PSP committee meeting, that the PSP could make a recommendation to the council. They could make a recommendation that the ordinance be amended.
Our policy concerns and our goals for the year primarily, that that type of thing won't happen anymore. And that's, that's...
Well, can I, oh, can I, can I first just...
Let me just, let me ask, I'm not clear on, this ordinance was in the council packet for the committee meeting. And then that same version was in the council meeting packet for the full council meeting. So what, what part of that seems surprising?
What seemed surprising to me was that we were taking the EDC separately from all the other commissions, and it seemed to be in response to an appointment.
But that's how it was originally...
I know, but I'm saying that that, that made the focus one council member's appointment, rather than looking at the whole picture of how we're dealing with, so it changed the focus.
Well, that, that relates to the merits of the particular ordinance at issue, and I'm certainly not going to comment on the merits of the ordinance, that's for you guys to figure out. But with respect to the process with which that ordinance was brought forward, it, the ordinance that I drafted was completely unchanged from the day that it went into the committee packet until the day that it went into the full council packet.
Yeah, well, it didn't come out of committee, Jeff. It didn't come out of committee.
Can I explain the, what, can I, first of all, what happened? I just want to explain that the website was down for two days, which is why the information was not properly disseminated, other than to Strong and Jeff. But a week before that, or two weeks before that, council did receive an email saying this is going to go to the PSP committee. And then what happened is the website was down from Wednesday to Thursday, and so I had to call Jeff and call Sandy and tell Sandy what I wanted to have on the agenda, just like when I showed you with Carrie and what was happening.
See, I'm not thinking so much about the details. I'm thinking about the, the process of why something that was not a priority for all of council that we focused on in such a, almost like an urgent way. And that's what I'm talking about. And I'm, the details to me are less important than the fact that there was an agreement among the council that we even wanted an ordinance about. So that, and I appreciate why you did it. I'm just looking at the bigger picture. And that's why I mentioned, if we have our priorities clear of what we're focusing on, then we're not going to be responding to these so-called urgent issues, which to me don't seem urgent.
But it was an urgent issue, because the fact of the matter is...
Well, see, this is where we will disagree, so I...
No, those are more about the details.
One of the ground rules that we talked about is, you know, we make decisions and move on. And I hate to, you know, be talking about this a lot.
No, no, I'm just talking about the process.
And I believe, I believe that a lot of the ground rules that we're setting forth will address some of those issues.
Yes, and that's what I was saying, that hopefully these ground rules will, so that this will not happen again. Because to me, I felt like that was making a so-called urgent decision on something that we needed more time to look at all the commission, boards and commissions. So, you know, again, I don't want to give you much details, but just in terms of, just what you said, I agree. And that's what, what I hope, that our ground rules will help prevent something like that from happening again.
And Laura, we're going to give you the last word that we have here.
Thank you. Yeah, no, we have to move on, and maybe we even get a short break. But I think what Joan is pointing out is that in her efforts to have an ordinance drafted, she was unsuccessful regarding the ethics commission. And in the recent effort to have an ordinance drafted, it was highly successful, despite the fact that apparently in either case, it came from maybe not the council majority. If we want to deal with that, a simple policy would be that if you have a great idea you want to move forward on, then you get four people to authorize Jeff at a council meeting to bring back a draft of this ordinance. And if we make that a ground rule or whatever, and again, maybe it needs more discussion, we can't probably do it today, but if that becomes the rule, and if sometime there is a true urgency, then maybe we can figure out how to make an exception.
See, and I, I know she has last foot, but...
No, but he pointed.
But see, I, my disagreement is that maybe there's two of us that think that something should be put together, so it should take four of us. See, so, you know, because then they have to, you have to do a whole lot of work then. You're getting four votes before you even get a chance to discuss it.
I think Joan's, I think Joan's point would be that it at least needs to be four, you pick the number. I don't care if it's two or four.
Well, I agree with Jeff, and he's among the people that...
And I mean, all they have to do is call me. I was, I was available on the phone. No, 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 what I'm just saying, because if you read them...
I think this what Laura is saying.
Well, break.
Yeah, let me just say one thing before you... So I just want to reiterate one thing. I'll do what you want, but the current policy, until and directly otherwise, is that the council president does have unique power as, in that, right now, until you directly otherwise, the council president is the only council member that can singularly direct me to draft an ordinance. If you want to change that, that's fine, but that's...
What's the basis of that power? Just that, because it's not any...
It's just, it's the, it's the way we've been operating.
Okay.
It's the way we've been operating, and I plan to continue to operate that way until and directly otherwise. I just want to be very clear about that.
So it does seem like this conversation needs to be closed at some other point further. Okay.
So as you see, according to the agenda, in a minute, I'm going to ask the customers and the mayor to specify roles and responsibilities and expectations of one another. But let me just fill you and Dave and all of the directors, because you worked with us last week, and we just have an hour to order again with the council only. So let me just tell you where we are. You've got, from an email yesterday along with the agenda, you've got a cultural statement and some proposed ground rules. And the cultural statement, I think, was pretty self-explanatory, I hope so, is the council's definition of what is a high-performing city council. And last week on the agenda, we posted as, what is it that you want to be one year from now, May 2015? So you've had that, you've had the opportunity to look at it. As a result of the meeting that took place just an hour ago, there were some changes made to it. And it doesn't look like you all have hard copies where you could like make the changes as I read them out. And I made a mistake of making way too many copies of the agenda, and I did make enough copies of the cultural statement and the ground rules, because my computer ran out of ink, and I didn't have time to get the staples to get more. So I'll let them just read it to you, and I think I'll wait till we get there. But there are a few changes to the cultural statement, not many. But the ground rules, as you probably saw, there were 15 of them. And as a result of the conversation this morning, we're now down to about, I can't write, I don't know the total, but I think we're down to about eight to 10. So we eliminated some, primarily from the understanding that they are reflected already in this cultural statement. So just a question for all of you, not going to be answered now, because if you, if you're busy, we'll get back to this. But the question, I think, now for the mayor and the directors is, do you think that you could live with the cultural statement and these ground rules? That you would be able to join the council as the largest team here to abide by these? And so when we get to that question, we'll deliver the agenda, you have every right to offer some suggested changes, and so it'll be a very open discussion. But I am very proud of the council for identifying or brainstorming it last week, and then today coming to basically an agreement that they said these things would work for them. So we'll come back to that in a little while. So we'll come back to that in a little while.
But I do want to ask Dave or any of the directors, if any, quick questions?
Jim, I don't know if it would be helpful for you to give us sort of a higher level of what has changed in the cultural statement from last week to this week.
Would I now?
Yeah, so we get a reflection of what we're... What we're gonna do.
Okay. With the cultural statement, it is a matter of, I would say, more words meant to make things positive. So for example, under number three, they're not numbered, but it's a little star. It started off by saying, "We know each other better and respect one another." And then there was another sentence. The second sentence is eliminated, and the sentence will now read, "We strive to know each other better." And then Strong pointed out that the concept of leadership was missing from this cultural statement. So the next one is now going to just say, "Our leadership and collaboration..." I think we should say "is guided," because it will be incorrect, and then that will give citizens a bit... No, thank you. Sorry. No, it feels that our leadership and collaboration are guided by. And then at the next page, here's an example where the council wanted to have a positive declaration. Instead of saying, "We do not make decisions behind closed doors," it will say, "Decisions are made openly and publicly." And then the rest of it will remain as it is.
There was one other change. I'm sorry. Is the third from the bottom?
Oh, I was looking at that.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, when you said the rest of it, you know, English is a wonderful language. When you said the rest of it will remain the same as it is, I... You know, well...
Am I right in that?
Yeah, I know, it depends.
I'll say that.
Well, when you said it, I...
If I could only speak in French or German or something like that.
That's fair.
See, I am remembering how I meant to do this, I'll put my hair... Okay, so yes, Tom.
Thank you.
So that one will have that one sentence changed. But then at the end, the spirit to the bottom, just to clarify, that the council is still very available and accessible to the public. It will start off by saying, "We are available and accessible to talk to our constituents about issues." And then the next sentence will just change to the extent of, "We do not talk personally about recovery." And so those are the changes. So that is culture. And then I'll just quickly do the... I think I can do the ground rules, too. Number two, among the ground rules, as I think a couple of people pointed out, is almost an outcome. And also, it's already in the cultural statement. But Joan pointed out that, starting with the second sentence through the end, it really is a declaration of how the council will approach things. We will first be looking for areas of agreement. And so we thought, I suggest that this and I, I think a couple liked the idea, that it really could, it's important enough that that's not going to become part of a cultural statement as opposed to being a ground rule. And then I'll just comment that we looked at four, slow down. Number three, getting rid of that phrase, "There are no surprises among us." But the important intent here is just communicating with each other, getting each other heads up. So that stays. There was a point of that four and 10 are kind of similar. And there was talk about trying to combine and collapse them, but I think some better heads, because I was a little suspicious of it, that better heads said, "No, they have distinct differences." We maybe could reorder them, kind of put them together in the ground rules, but they will each remain. So four and 10. But five, you and nine are going away. Because they relate, at least the intention, if not the actual words, the intention is already in the cultural statement. And one of the council's interests was really with making these more manageable, reducing the number. Diane started out by saying that, and I think everybody agreed with that interest. Let's... Simplicity is better, and not too much duplication. So five and eight are gone. 10, 11, and 12, there were healthy conversations about all of those with some people originally proposing the need to get rid of them. But by the time the discussion ended, it was clear that everybody thought, no, let's keep them. And the people who are arguing for gain have made some very good points. So everybody finally came to a consensus on that. 15 is going away, primarily because it is already in the cultural statement. And 14 and 15 will remain. So we'll have the ones, three, four, 10, 11, 12, 14, and 15. Makes it a little bit more manageable.
And then you're also going to indicate that they're ground rules. You're going to join the two documents.
Yes, that's a very important point. We were talking about how do we make sure that they're together almost as one document and maybe sibling something for the administration. The council was wondering, like, couldn't even use graphics or whatever, get them together, and then maybe if they go on a website or whatever. Somehow they really are more one document. Because somebody made a good point that, what if people see these as two separate things and then feel like a whole bunch of things have been left out of one? That we can somehow get them to be one document, they'll be in common. That's where we are with this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for making me do that. I think that's important to go through that first. But we will return to that issue. So we're running a little bit behind. Don't be worried about that, that's night job. But we're going to go to session three right now to define the roles and responsibilities, which we'll go back for our table 23rd workshop. If you guys have a very important issue, the council started talking about it last time. But here we decided we would just have this conversation with everybody. And as you look at these questions, they really are directed to the council members and to Dave. At some point, I do want to welcome the department directors to provide perspective. But first question really is for the council. And let me just say that in terms of our process, I think questions one and two on here and three, and maybe even the last one, are probably things that I'd like to ask you, to take, just like, you know, can you speak in one minute or so? When we get to question four, I want to give maybe Dave a little bit more time to speak about, well, what did he just learn from the council? Just like when you get to the last question, I'm sorry, I didn't say here. When you get to the last question, I want to give each of them a little bit longer time to say, well, what did you just learn from Dave? So just asking for, like, you to be succinct. And we'll just kind of, like, quickly list what you expected yourself, what do you need from your fellow council members, what do you need from the mayor? And then if you missed anything, if you've gone around once, I'll let you have another opportunity to add. So with that, first question, council members, what do you expect of yourself? Christiana, you missed this morning because of your dad's situation. You just got here, so I'm not going to call him first. Tom's going to have him first.
Sure. I think there's probably three things that come to mind right away. You know, the first thing I expect of the council, and speaking to myself on that, is we're prepared. And so that we do know that. And that if there's a moment that you're not prepared, you don't speak to something that you're not prepared on. So it's okay not to be prepared, but don't try to speak to something if you're not prepared. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that we really strive to listen. And I know that when I look at the agenda over the weekend, and I'm anticipating Tuesday night, I've already got my thoughts in place, and I'm thinking about this, and I'm on a path. And I have to remind myself that there's other paths, and I need to be prepared to listen to those other paths. And that my path may not be the best path in terms of the discussion item that we have. And then the last thing, and this was just brought up in our discussion, because Joan said it, was that there really aren't that many emergencies in life. So, you know, delaying a week is not the worst thing that could ever possibly happen. We may have one or two emergencies, but I would imagine that given years, there are not many emergencies that we're dealing with. So it's okay to ponder. So they would be the three things that I might say about expectation. What about you, Adrian? What do you expect of yourself in a convenient way to fill up the complement of the overall council?
I think what I've learned is that I need to expect more willingness to change positions when given more information. I think that's a... Once we're given a certain amount of information, we tend to make a position based on that information. And I think opening that up when more information is given is probably a good thing. And I think the other thing that really pops to my head is being a better listener, to be able to communicate issues that occur. Listening is a hard thing. It's easy to communicate, but to really listen to what somebody says is a little bit more difficult. So those are the couple of things that pop to my mind.
Laura?
I suppose what I expect of myself is I expect that I will be making good decisions and for the right reasons. And I probably also expect that of the other council members. And I know your next question is, what do you need from your fellow council members and where do they do that? And what I need from my fellow council members and where do they do that is their rationale. Why is it that we're doing this instead of that? Or why is it that this is the way we want to go on this issue? And I think I pointed out an example where Strong, a couple of weeks ago, had elaborated on why he was going to vote the way he was, which completely swayed me into agreement with him. And I was able to also vote that way and not waste our time by speaking against the motion because I realized that his concern was excellent to him. I find that helpful, and I appreciate it.
Joan?
Well, I expect of myself that I always keep in mind that I am a trustee of the public funds and that I will review every contract and every expenditure and make every decision with that in mind. And I also expect of myself that every decision I make considers the best interest of the residents that I represent and also considers the best interest of future generations and how the decisions will impact future generations. As far as what I expect from my fellow council members, I would like us to decide together our legislative and policy priorities for each year and to focus on accomplishing those agreed-upon goals. And I would like us not to be, and hope that we will not be distracted by dramatic issues that are not within our agreed-upon priority list, unless they really are something that have come to light because we really do need to deal with them immediately. And I'd like to... For as much as possible, I'd like for us to focus on where we agree. And I want to be able to talk openly about our disagreements and remain respectful of each other, even if we strongly disagree and cannot come to agreements.
Dan?
What do you expect of yourself? Well, I expect of myself to do the best job that I can do and continue to be positive in positive light. I also want to express that I do believe that everything always is in motion and that you can't just have black and white, yes or no, agree, disagree. You know, everything is fluid. And that sometimes things, emergencies will come, and we need to address them. And we just need to move forward, and there's no wrong, there's no right way, and it's just a collaboration. And that's what I expect. And I really think we need to learn to respect the position of all elected officials, as well as the directors and all the staff that we work with.
Joan?
For myself, I expect myself to be prepared, as Tom mentioned, to know what's happening here, specifically on an agenda or even kind of broadly, just what's happening in the city and the region. I expect a certain level of openness for myself to hear, well, I don't want to say a certain level, just say openness, to hear new ideas, whether it's from fellow council members or citizens or staff members. And with that, I also expect myself to come up with new ideas, whether it be ways to improve economic factors or the environment or whatever other issues that we work with. But to always be on the lookout for bringing new things to the city of Edmonds that may be working somewhere else that I may have read about or heard about. But to always try to bring new concepts to the city. From council members, and this also reflects on me, I expect some level of flexibility when it comes to especially discussing new ideas and figuring out ways to come up with compromise. I think that's another expectation that I give of myself and fellow council members to be willing to find a compromise, even if you walk away not terribly happy with your result. Dan Dawson once said, "If nobody walks away from the table happy, you probably produce some pretty good legislation." And that sticks in my head, so I think that's something that I... And again, I expect this of myself and my fellow council members.
Christiana?
My expectations are that I represent the community as a whole when I make decisions, the 40,000 people. Sometimes I make decisions that I personally would not make, but I do it because I think it's in the best interest of the community. I want to be as prepared as possible. And it's very difficult when we get the agenda packets Friday, 5:00, and we're expected to do all of our research and discussions by Tuesday. I think that I would like more late time on some of these issues. My expectations from the other council members, I think when we're on the dais, we need to be as professional as possible. I think that the people in the audience can see us, and I think we need to change some of our behavior. For example, we need to stop checking our emails on our telephones. We should pay attention when we are speaking. We shouldn't be eating or having side note conversations or passing notes. I think we need to represent good government and be as respectful of each other as possible.
Let's go to the... Can I suggest we have another round? Just because you had... Okay, I pondered and so... And then let you feed on comments of other people, so... One of the things I would add to that is this sense of trust among one another. And I think Joan said this about the fact that we look at the best intentions that we do have. And so there is a certain level of trust among us. And not only trust among us as council members, but trust the staff, the senior staff of the city, that they're all trying to do their best, and they're giving their best recommendations. It doesn't mean we agree with the recommendation, but we trust that it's their best recommendation.
And I also did address what I expect and need from my fellow council members. And I think I've written down teamwork and honesty. I mean, I think honesty is an important trait in society, in a world, in a group of this size. And more focus on teamwork and less focus on those sort of sections or groups that you develop. I hesitate to use this word, one because I can't think of another word in its place, but cliquiche behavior. I mean, sometimes it reminds me of back in the high school, the way the behavior occurs because it definitely includes the people that are in and doesn't include the people that are in. And I'd like to see us more in a trusting environment where everybody's in. And I think that's what I would like to see from my fellow council members. And by having a little teamwork and honesty, I think we can... That, I'm told.
Laura, do you want to add anything?
Yes, Tom, thank you for all those Mariner updates. You've been passing me dirty meetings.
I know.
If those keep on the thing of the past, I'll know why. I appreciate it.
Joan?
I want to echo Christiana's statement about what we do in the meetings because I think that's really important. And I agree that we shouldn't be, you know, passing notes, talking to each other, and not emailing, texting, whatever, while we're meeting. And I do want to say that, you know, what I always do is take notes, so I hope people understand. That's what I'm doing.
I wonder if you're writing a novel. Well, that'll come later with all the...
I just did it, did it wing and everything. Although I do, I must admit, sometimes you do need to ask questions, but you can't find a conflict on the question. Someone else has it right there. Someone else has it right there. So sometimes you do have to have a little bit of an exchange to figure out where you are or how do you get where you're going and all that.
I think just the other things that I expect, and this will be in the next question as
well, it's not necessarily the things, these are things I'm not getting. Yeah, I addressed this, but I certainly, I think the honesty and truthfulness that Tom and Adrian can obviously, one of those issues, I should just always be aware of.
I'll add that in preparing for the meeting, sometimes I'll have a conversation with another council member and if there's a difference of opinion, sometimes I feel like my opinion isn't as valued as the other person's opinion. And there's a pressure to, almost a, I don't know. There are many words I could use, but I just, it's uncomfortable when those ideas are not accepted and you're trying to explain yourself over and over. And it becomes a little one-sided. So I think that the key issue here is respect, not only for the office, but also for the ideas that the individuals have. And if they're different, I think that's okay, but there should be a respectful way to handle it.
Christiana, what I hearing you say is acknowledgement of your position. Is acknowledgement the right word?
Okay. But, yeah, but accepting it and not asking 10 different questions in 10 different ways that tries to undermine or validate.
Yes, validates.
Okay. I'm going to have the council go around and ask a certain question of what do you expect and need from the mayor? And then I'm going to do, I might even insert one other question, but let's do that first. So again, I'm going to start with you, Tom.
What do I expect from the mayor?
I think you should start with Adrian, other than that.
Really?
Well, because I, obviously, I'm so prepared for this. So what do I expect? I think I expect the mayor to be forthright. And again, I'm going to say with Trump, it doesn't mean he isn't, but he's, he's, he's got to be forthright, that when there is a difference of opinion, that he states why he believes that his position is the right position. And I think, well, you just said, Christiana, acknowledging the other position. So acknowledging there's two ways to look at this, but this is why I'm going this way and why I'm going to my right position. I, this isn't my expectations, but I think the mayor's in an offered position because he's moderating the meeting, yet may have a definite opinion about what's transforming in terms of where the council's going on a particular subject. And that's a difficult juggling position to be in sometimes. And so I would, so I think the mayor should acknowledge when he's in one of those difficult positions. We probably guess it, but you know, having that, especially from the people that are in the audience. And I'll probably think of more on the same one.
You can say more?
I'm going to ask one. Whether or not you get one is another story.
See, there was nothing in your report about saying the intentions, you know, you live as an opponent.
I want to feel like the council's respected as the legislative body that they should be respected as and that we're not made fun of, that we're not joked about, that we're not undermined to other people that bark on the council. You know, I think that having respect for the council is an important way for us to respect the administration too. It's a two-way road and I think, I think it's important that we're treated in that level, with that level of care.
Laura?
I suppose I want the same thing from the mayor really as I want from my fellow council members, which is information and the rationale for what we're doing. I may, I may disagree that maybe that somebody's doing this because they think we'll make $1,400 more tax money if we build a new unit here or whatever. And somebody else might have a different rationale for doing something differently. But I would like to know because it's the only way I can feel like I'm making good decisions is if I know the information and why we think we're doing it as well, think this is good.
Joan?
Well, I have various specific things and examples that go with that. And it's not easy for me to express this, but I have to. I'd like for you to carry out our legislative agenda and faithfully enforce all laws and amendments. And an example I have of that is the ordinance and budget amendment that the council voted on and approved to fill the Edmonds Services Director position before the end of 2013. I'd like for you to make sure that staff present us with all the information necessary for council to make decisions about large capital projects such as Sunset Avenue Walkway or when they're seeking funds for major studies such as the alternative study to resolve conflicts at the Manhattan and Main River Crossing. I would like you not to interfere in the legislative process in our council meetings. And an example of when you did that was when we were ready to vote on the Harvest Plan Master Plan. And we ended up spending another nine months going over that. And it involved a lot of staff time, citizen angst. I would like you not to promote your own agenda with other plans and especially those issues that have not been voted on by council. And one of these is the, the example that I have of that is the Don't Block RV Rally. And I don't think I'm incorrect that you hired a public relations firm to do that media blitz or whatever you call it. And the result of that was that you put on the agenda, or staff put on the agenda, exploration of a tunnel under the railroad tracks to resolve the ferry and railroad issues. And the last point is that I'd like you to treat me as a valuable contributor to the future of Edmonds and not just dismiss my input because we so frequently disagree and because I'm not one of your four votes.
Okay.
Well, I expect you to continue to do a good job in our region because I think you do an excellent job and you have a lot of respect throughout the city as well as the region. I continue to expect you to challenge me and add humor when we need humor. And even I agree that you will say you draw a line in the sand and I appreciate that you allow me to draw that line in the sand and keep, keep my point and you keep your point and we agree to disagree and there's nothing wrong with that. And I, I, let's see. I think on our Monday meetings, I'd like a little coffee. No, other than that, I'm, I'm, I think everybody should maybe sit with you in one of our Monday meetings to understand that you do in fact take into consideration a lot of good for the community. Thank you.
Well, the office of the mayor, I expect leadership and ideas. I think it's the, really the only full-time elected person at Edmonds that you have at liberty because the mayor has a role to bring ideas and that's kind of the reason we have a professional administrative staff is to discover what, what's happening in other communities and to bring those to Edmonds on any call from tuition. So I, that's, that's my, the main expectation from the position of the mayor is that kind of leadership and I think Diane pointed out some of them, especially with some of the regional issues. I think that's the big, only thing.
Well, I'm looking forward to the second round, so. My expectation with the mayor is that we have a good relationship and open communication. And I believe that from the beginning of my appointment, I've always had that with the mayor. I also expect him to run the city council meetings and to use the Robert's Rules of Order in the way that people speak so that we don't have one side or one person speaking more than allowed. For example, it says that in Robert's that a person may speak first, the person who makes the motion has the right to speak first. And then other people may speak, but they may only speak a second time after everyone else has had an opportunity and that there's not a back and forth. And if you have a divide in side, you should probably have one from each side. That's a difficult job, but I think whoever's in the leadership role needs to do that. And I would like the mayor to be restored back to the center of the dais and use whatever electronic means or visual means necessary to acknowledge people as we use paddles or something, maybe some symbols. Let's see. What I need from the mayor is him to guide the employees, be that, in that leadership role. And if there is a project that he can direct, his directors to do that project. I have probably, but not been squeaky wheel enough on a project that I'm really concerned about and it's been delayed forever, it seems like. So I would expect that if, when there is a, when it is important, that there be some movement, some acknowledgement rather than delay or... And I think as a former legislator in the city of Edmonds, the mayor probably with his 12 years' experience is better at that legislative job than we are. And I think we need to, to keep our legislative role amongst the council members and keep the executive role in the mayor's office.
Tom, do you want to add anything to what you've agreed?
I want to reinforce three things. The first is the position, the mutual respect of the positions. So I'm going to add the mutualness that, that, you know, we respect the mayor's role when the mayor is the mayor respects our role. And if we can heighten that, and it's not to say that it isn't happening, but it could happen even at a higher level, and I think that would be a plus for us. I do expect the mayor to be able to be the leader of the city. He's the mayor. And I want to acknowledge that I think he's played that more well within our county. And last night, several of us were at the Puget Sound Regional Council meeting and it was nice that the mayor there and, you know, he is the face of Edmonds, being the mayor of the city. It doesn't mean that the council members don't have a face in the city, but, you know, the mayor plays a unique role in that way. And then just the openness, you know, the open communication is always a positive thing. And that earlier in our session, we were talking about, oh, we just did an acknowledgement, acknowledgement of positions and validation. That doesn't mean we agree, but we acknowledge and we got there.
You do?
I'm going to continue.
Laura?
Yeah, I wanted to elaborate a little bit on the information aspect because with the social media available now, particularly my Edmonds news, it's, it's more challenging. But the, the truth is that it works better if we hear something from staff or the mayor than if we hear it from concerned citizen X who went and dug it up by reviewing some grant applications or concerned citizen Y who was surfing the Inua at Net Monday and found out the background of this particular person. It's better if we hear it from staff. And so that if I'm out and haven't checked my Edmonds news, I might be able to answer questions of why the pool isn't open and when it's going to open. And maybe I got an email about that and missed it, or maybe I didn't, I'm supposed to check my Edmonds news and find it out. But it just, stuff comes to us more neutrally, more factually, more professionally from staff than it does from the person who wants to go swimming tomorrow or whatever. And so the information piece, I think, I just, I want to try to turn it up a bit so that I rarely learn things from the citizens and I more often learn them from the city.
Joan, anything more?
No, I don't think so. I mean, just, I guess in turn, just one thing that popped into my head when Laura was talking, it's related to the emails that we have showing that, you know, I find out about randomly. I would like to be in on all of the emails to citizens around, around any issue, whether it's rain gardens or Sunset Avenue Walkway. I want to be included on those email lists. I feel that as an elected official, I need to be abreast of all those issues. So an expectation would be that when those email lists are formed, that the mayor would make sure that staff include all council members or any council member who wants to be on those email lists as a way to...
Dan, do you want to add anything?
I just want to say it's a tough job and I think he's doing a good job of it because I do believe that there are always two sides to every story and there's all, again, there's no right or wrong, but sometimes stuff happens. I would use a different term, but we're on TV. But, you know, things happen and you just have to move forward and not carry all that regret or whatever.
Dan, can you just add something?
I'm going to, I would just echo the communication piece to make sure that as much information is coming to council as possible. I think that's, has occasionally been the point of contention that we didn't hear about it until too late and had we known, it would have been...
Too late?
Well, it would have been, it wouldn't have been an issue. And that's, I think that's just learning how to get stuff out, so just kind of making that part of it.
Okay. The other?
Yes, I'd just like to acknowledge that he has, has taken a regional view and placed Edmonds in the regional context. I think he's shown a great deal of leadership. He's on the community transit board, the sound transit board. He's taken the presidency of Snohomish County Cities and Parks. He's helped in the economic alliance of Snohomish County and probably other organizations that I'm not aware of. But this is his choice and I think that what he's stood in for the community is excellent.
Dave, I'm going to turn to you and ask you what your questions are, what council members have said that they expect me to review and in what respect they feel like. I was originally thinking of trying to write all this so it would be in front of all of you and it's not that I seem to be taking some notes and it's kind of broad, but feel some impressions of things that you just heard from the council, but they...
Well, the comments are well-intended and I can accept most of them. There are a couple that just need public correction and the implication that we hired someone... And the implication that we hired someone to work on the beach event is simply wrong. So you need to note that. No one was hired.
Well, can I just say, in Harold Douglas's application for the communication consultant position, she said that she worked on the Don Bockel Beach.
She did work on it. I don't know about fee. She was never paid a fee as far as I know.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure. And I think kind of tied into that, but it's really a construct of many of the comments. I think citizens and council members have different views of what the role of the mayor is. My view is a combination of things, that yes, we should be showing leadership. Yes, we should come up with ideas, acknowledging that sometimes those new ideas are bound to be braced by some either council members or people in the public. But if you are going to try and move the city forward, you sometimes are going to have ideas that you know ahead of time, not everyone is going to agree with. So I'll kind of leave all of the rest of that aside and say, you know, all of the other, what you need from mayor stuff, I certainly can take into consideration and see where we can make improvements. I think, getting back to the idea of the role of the mayor, it certainly is to manage the city. And I think along with the directors that we have here, a good job is done with that. I think the city is well managed. We watch out financially. We try and anticipate expenses and revenue. But also, as I think it was Tom was suggesting, you do become, and I'll use history, the base of the city. And it's not a self-promotion thing. It's simply being supportive as you move your way through the committee. Do I go to most of the ribbon cuttings? Of course I do. I support the business team. We need to have a strong business team. If that's self-promotion, then I miss the point. And if I'm doing other things related to an activity that benefits the city in some way, I'm certainly going to use it. Not, all the mayors probably agree with that as a priority, but I think being the base of the city is important. But that's kind of my general response. I can look at this list and I got two half pages of notes and who said what. And I'm glad to try and take a look and perhaps even contact each of you to have you elaborate on what you mean by certain points. So I think generally speaking, that would have to be my response unless you're looking for something specific, Jim.
Well, one thing that I'm struck by is many of these comments have fortified the values that you all put on the table April 23rd. They've kind of reiterated and fortified the values that are in the cultural statement and they've even reiterated the ground rules. But I guess I want to just kind of push you a little bit more to, is there some succinct way to clarify or define your role vis a vis the councils? And again, I think a lot of the comments I've heard are doing that, but I don't know exactly if it is possible to do something that's almost had a simple definition.
Well, if you look just at the economy of comments, centering around participation in the meetings. Some council members say, stay out of it. You're just there to run the meeting. Others have made implication that it would be good to have the mayor's input at certain points. I don't want to feel, A, that I'm offending the council by asking for the floor. On the other hand, sometimes the mayor has a different collective perspective than the council members may have. And so I try not to ask for the floor. There are times that I don't ask for the floor. Excuse me, thinking what the hell, just letting him make his own decision. Because I sometimes get in trouble when I try to speak. I, you know, and I don't, for the times that I've done it, and if I've blurted out, I apologize for that part of it. But on the other hand, I have tried to get into habit of asking for the floor and will continue to try to do that. So Jim, I don't know where else you want me to go with your...
Well, actually, that wasn't just directed to you. It was directed to everybody. I wasn't trying to just put you on the spot.
Can I make a comment in silence for a second? One of the things that I heard that I'm intrigued by and I think will be an area where the mayor and the council need to continue to work together to bridge a gap, I guess. I hear the mayor saying that he uses his role as being one of bringing forth ideas and leadership. And I hear the council saying they view their role as being policymakers for the city. And there is a little bit of a tension there. And that tension, I think, needs to be explored and discussed. And I think it's probably not going to all happen today, given our limited timeframe. But I think we should acknowledge that tension and understand that there needs to be further discussion to kind of delineate that a little bit better.
Yeah, I actually think that's tensioned by design. And if you look at, you know, government across the country, you know, there's always that, even when, you know, we're not partisan, but even if partisan approaches, there's, you know, when they're of the same party, there's that tension. You know, because you have a collective thought, so we're seven collective thinkers and there's a, not a single thinker, but you know, there's a one leader there. And so there is that tension, but I think that's tensioned by design. And so that we just need to acknowledge the tension, but also allow it to unfold. So that we, you know, that goes back to respect and acknowledgement and validation, that, you know, the mayor certainly has a right to bring forward a proposal and we have the right to either approve it or not. And we should allow him that opportunity to bring those things forward and listen to those things and respond to those things. And as we have a right to bring things forward and do the same thing. So that's just part of the legislative executive tension that's going to... But if you don't acknowledge it, then it becomes an irritant, but it is something that's there.
Laura, go ahead.
Something that Tom just mentioned really strikes me, which is the mayor brings forward an idea and we have the option to approve it or we're not approved it. Which of course leaves out basically what to me might be the most important option we have, which is to change it.
Oh, of course.
And modify it and improve it and make it more palatable perhaps to those who didn't initially like it or make it of greater value to everybody or I don't want to exaggerate. But there are several possible benefits that could come from the idea not being fully correct, perfect, and this is what we have to do on the first showing. But rather it gets discussed, we take it into account, it gets changed and presumably improved. And we, you know, move ahead with a newer idea in a more open and cooperative approach. One of the things that doesn't seem to be working right now is we'll think of the idea, we won't give the opposition, whether that's three people or 60% of the city, time to organize and we'll just, we'll just go and do this. And my feeling is that if that's not working and that another approach we could try is we'll think of the idea, we'll put it out there, we'll talk about it. Edmonds probably never going to like it, but there might be some improvements that are made that would help the community.
Good. I think, you know, there used to be more opportunity for full-blown discussions at the council level and essentially the community as well. And I think we've gotten trapped in a sort of system where things get compartmentalized without necessarily having that whole discussion. So the council used to use one of their regular meetings each month for those kinds of discussions, which I think are very, very valuable. But then you can have all views represented rather than just two views at a time. And potentially it sort of traps the discussion into, well, here's a problem and here's the proposed solution, rather than like, well, what's the range of options? Because, you know, when you have the full discussion with the full council, you get a full range of options discussed, I think. And that's something I'd like to see sort of explored, reinstated.
You mean like real work sessions?
Yeah, yeah. And essentially a committee discussion of the council as a whole, rather than compartmentalizing into particular interests.
Can I just say, I think Rob, here's something that you've admitted, you've omitted, sharing with all of you, the directors and the mayor. Last week at the council's workshop, there was quite a lengthy brainstorming of ideas for improving processes, 15 of them. And one of them was to carve out a study session each month. Or even an alternative was to have somehow shorter study sessions maybe periodically put before the council meeting. Anyway, we didn't share that because in, when I sent out the summary to everybody, the more of the comments and focus was on the cultural statement and the ground rules. And a couple of people did comment, they said, I don't know if I like the third brainstorm idea for process improvements, or I don't like the sixth or whatever. And I said to a couple of people when I was talking on the phone the other day, that we probably need to give that list back to all of you. And at some point, you should think a little bit about maybe sharing it with Dave, the directors, and they, and talking about it. But some of them are so much just the council's processes too, that we probably should have a continued discussion about that. But study sessions, probably just wanted to tell you, is one of the things that they talked about a lot last week. So I'm sorry, in one respect, we didn't share it, but you probably should have just adhered to the summary so you have that context too.
Yeah, because I'd really like to see things move forward as more of an agreement to discuss and, you know, come up with solutions rather than debate. And I think we fall much too much in the habit of debating rather than discussing.
So just kind of a little summary, based on Jeff's question, Tom, Tom, there's a little bit of tension by design. I guess what I'm hearing right now, and it's just from one or two of you, not from everybody, but the idea that both the mayor and the council can bring forth proposals. If it's a proposal from the mayor, the administration should be prepared that as the council reviews it, they might be making some suggestions about how to improve it and strengthen it. I think Laura's also hot talk, make sure that this is done in a way that gives sufficient time for reflection and for touching base with citizens, whether that's collectively or individually. But just giving the time for considering it, reflecting, even proposing some changes. But, so three of you spoke to that and I haven't heard from all of you. But I mean, Dave, are you, you said that that's not what you were expecting, that you were putting proposals together because you have a vision for the city, but councilors have a vision, they put proposals together?
Yeah, much of the work that gets done at the council comes forward by committee. It's not so much what the mayor's ideas is. It is what came out of committee, this agenda, and then that is the basis for discussion. One of the things, and Rob and I didn't stage this, that I would suggest the council consider is in fact having one honest-to-God work session a month. Honest to God, no interrupted, we need to make a quick decision on this. Yes, there will be emergencies. But I happen to think that one of the reasons that we get bogged down in the process is through the committee structure, because we need to do a committee meeting. Sometimes the committee members don't disagree, but yet it moves to the council anyway. Then we have a full-blown what's going on meeting with seven people talking about it. I think if we could introduce a topic, whether it's my idea or the council's idea, or one that's working its way through the system by its own natural volition, and have the committee as a whole discuss issues, to ask questions, then information can come back to the council members if we can't find the answer right there on the spot. With that, I would propose that we then have three meetings a month of our quote "regular" meetings. Because frankly, folks, there's no reason for us to meet starting at 6 o'clock for an hour's worth of executive session and then three to four hours on the regular agenda. I think we'll get the big discussion out of the way at the second meeting of the month, if that's when you would decide to keep it. We then can get a sense of where an issue might be going. And when we get to the full council meeting, we don't have to argue it again. People get around to, let's make my point, somebody makes a motion and it's done.
So you're saying a work session before the committee meeting night?
No, 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 I'm saying eliminate committees, have a meeting of the whole.
Eliminate all committees?
No, it's a council meeting. And the idea is it's committee of the whole and we talk about big ideas, pet projects, whatever it is. But focus that with several people talking about it once, so that we don't have the first conversation with two people not really understanding what the other five might even think about the issue. If we did that in, and I'll keep saying the second Tuesday of the month, in place of a committee, it could eliminate the committee system. Allow us to work on big ideas, ask big questions.
Because that was a suggestion by Adrian, eliminate the committees. So you're talking about actually having a true work session the second Tuesday of the week?
I don't care what it is.
Well, I mean, to have all committee information come to the whole council.
No, the idea would be presented the first time at the committee of the whole.
Right.
What the issue is.
But what about like budget amendments and stuff like that? So that would come also rather than go to finance?
Well, if we want to have a budget committee designate, I mean Scott, Roger before that, Sean before that, we're always willing to meet the committee. So if there's some idea that would be generated there, fine. But I'm just trying to think of a way that we can move this along. Because while I respect Laura's request for a process, we too often get bogged down in process. So the question is, how can we pull it together more quickly and more easily?
...agenda and our policy agenda at the beginning of the year. And if we can come to, if the mayor can agree with our agenda, if we can cooperatively work on that, that's all well and good. But the point here is that we're, the reason we're so unfocused is because we don't have a clear legislative agenda. The mayor told me the other day that, you know, when we asked Jeff to work on development agreements. I haven't agreed that that's a priority. You know, the council hasn't even discussed what are our priorities for this year? Why are we, you know, why is the mayor setting policy and getting the city attorney to do things that have nothing to do with what council has decided are their priorities for the year? So I think a lot of this would be resolved if we, if council set the legislative priorities and the mayor and the staff work to enforce them. I mean, the issue with the alternative study to resolve conflicts in Dayton and Maine, that was brought by staff at the end of the year on a long list of capital improvement plans. And council had to just deal with it right then. And the year before, it was a tunnel, exploring a tunnel. Those are policy issues that, you know, huge capital projects, asking for large amounts of money for studies to, that really need to be carefully considered. And council needs to breathe that that's our role, that that's our policy, and that's not happening here. So getting into talking about what the committee does or what this does, we haven't even clarified what our roles are and our authority and our responsibility. I'm not willing to agree that the mayor should bring forward a policy change or a, you know, when he sees the executive branch with the legislative branch.
A whole bunch of other people want to jump in here too. So Laura, you did your hand up. Carrie wants to talk, Adrian, so.
Okay, I agree with Joan that there are two issues. And going back to the committee, I don't, I thought that a week ago when we all got together, we had more or less traveled down that path and considered keeping the committees, but also having a committee of the whole on that second Tuesday. And maybe I'm wrong or maybe I'm right.
You're right.
I don't think, I agree with Joan that we're undoubtedly not ready to get rid of the committees because we talked about how that would be our second touch. That does guarantee at least two touches on the proposal. Two, the more important concern about where the policies are coming from and who's administering the policies and how. I'd like to hear more about what's going on, the request to the city attorney. I didn't know we were working on development agreements. And I could probably think of six things that would be more... And I could probably think of six things that would be more important for Jeff to be spending his time on than development agreements. So I'm, I'm excited to hear where, where this is going to go. And I'll let some of those other people talk.
Adrian.
I again, I, I both, I agree with Dave when it comes to these committee issues. And I'll tell you why, because we're working in various boards and commissions for the last thirty years, have got a lot of backend experience in these subcommittees. And what these subcommittees are set up for, they don't do. The subcommittees themselves, even when the subcommittees come up with something, it's changed at council, and it kind of seems like it's a redundant step. Whereas if we all had that one night where we talked about these individual issues that come up on committees, that come up before the, the council as a whole, I think we would get a lot more done. I, I almost, and I hesitate to say it, but I almost think those individual committee sessions are a waste of time. Because by the time it marches through there and it gets to, to the council, it's going to be changed by council anyway. The only good it does, and there is one thing that I think is good, is that it gets, it gets rid of a lot of little things that appear before consent. I mean, there are a lot of little things like an agreement with this organization to do this, and so we don't have to talk about it at council. It does get on the consent agenda, and I think that's probably a, a good thing. But the major content of these committees come back to the council anyway. So we, you know, we pick it up, we beat it around, we drop it, we pick it up, and we beat it around again. And I think we've spent a whole lot of time trying to move forward issues that come before these committees. And I don't think we get very far.
Very good.
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to share, just with the director hat on, and in response, I think mainly to what you were just talking about, Joan. You know, we as directors really try to balance the legislative policy and the administration of the organization. And oftentimes, we don't get a lot of airtime with the council for policy direction. We really look at our policy direction from the time that we have with council around the budget process and budget authority and adoption of the budget to go forward with projects, around our comprehensive plan, around our prose plan, around our street plan. We have plans that are vetted and adopted by council. That's really the hat that I wear in my job, and, and all of us directors do. And so to the extent that the plan says, in the next six years, you're going to do this, because this is what citizens have said, and council has adopted, and this is the plan, then I'm going to go forth and try to make this plan happen. I'm going to go try to acquire civic, and I'm going to go try to remaster Plan Marina Beach, so that we can have the daylighting and the willow tree across the beach. That's going to be controversial, but it is in the plan. And that's going to be our jobs to carry out. So I just wanted to, that, that's really the legislative direction, it's, that, that I fall back on, is what has been adopted and vetted by the public and by the council. And to the extent that we could have a study session, that would be great, so that we could talk about these controversial issues, so that we're all working together as one team. But I, I just want to respond to that, that balancing.
I just wanted to jump in and say, we're looking at the time and everything. I'm hearing, I guess, a little bit clearer than I heard last week, that the council does like the idea of a study session, maybe it's the second Tuesday of the month, and it's all about, as Dave said, kind of these bigger picture topics, and it gives the whole council a chance to initially weigh in. It might be too radical of a step, or too fast of a step, to say, we're going to decide today to not have committees anymore. But one area I agree on now hearing is the idea of study sessions, more clearly than even last week. So I also want to set that aside for a minute, just to say, still this question about where does policy start? And is it okay for a mayor to propose policy initiatives as well as with the council? And how do you like work together on the council's legislative agenda, maybe mix and match the executives' vision?
To almost touch on that, especially with the, the development agreements. I mean, this is something that's been talked about in front of council for a hundred years. And it has had council authority to move forward. It's stalled for various reasons, but there's never been a council action to stop talking about it. And we decided a long time ago that this was something that we wanted to move forward with. So I think to say that the mayor is suddenly bringing this up, I, I think is completely erroneous. We have, we have asked staff, we've, I've had, when I was council president, I had a lot of meetings with Jeff about development agreements. And again, it's because, for various reasons, it got stalled, and I'm not, I don't even know what they were. But there was never council direction to, to take that off of our plate.
But there was never council direction to do that?
Yes, there was. That's what I'm saying. But if we change, if we change, this, these things take a long time. Like I said, this, this was a very long process. We wanted to get it done faster, but there were a lot of, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of discussion with committees, there was a lot of discussion with staff to work through some of the issues. No, you haven't voted on it. But if we, if we change our policy every year, if we change our direction every January, we won't get anything done. Big public works projects take a lot longer than a year to get through. A prose plan takes a lot longer than just a year to get through. So if every year, we come up with a new priority to work on, does that mean that all of the things that were being worked on the year before, if we change our mind, well, we're just going to shelve that? Unless we make a statement to do that, it just, it doesn't make sense. And then I think the third part of the process of things that come to the city, and I think this is, I think this is one of the real issues that happened. When the port project came to the city, it was assumed by many that that was a staff-driven project, and it was not. There is another process of the way things come to city council, and that's kind of a public process. And that's through, you know, it's maybe it's a PRD, or it's a, some other kind of big development. It's not necessarily staff-driven, it's not the mayor's idea. It's, it might be a developer's idea, and they're going through the permitting process, and then the final process comes to the city council, obviously with staff input, because that's how the process, process gets made. But I think there was a big division and a lot of accusations that the port project when it came to the city was driven by the staff. And I think that, I think that was a misnomer on a lot of our parts. It was, you know, that was part of a public process that made its way through, and yes, there was staff input, because that's what they get paid to do. And that's, they're supposed to guide that through the process, so it comes to us. But they're not instigating that process, they're not initiating that process. They're getting paid to do a job, and that's to make sure that that, to help people make it through all of the hoops and ladders that come with government. So I think we're kind of forgetting that third bit of, you know, how issues come to the city council, or to the, or to the administration. And that's through another public process. And I think that, especially with that port project, there was a big division, because there were accusations made that the mayor and staff were driving this, and it was not mayor and staff driven, it was driven by the port. And their group and the staff did what they did to, I believe, to bring that, to bring that to the city.
Phil, you did your hand up, second one, Laura, your shot on. So did you want to kind of pick up on what's gone?
It was related, but just, it's just quick, and I don't know if it's a question or just an observation, but it actually felt for a minute there that we were debating, what is it, what is a legitimate source of a good idea for a bad source of a good idea? It seems to me, if there's a good idea, it's a good idea if it comes from the mayor at a council meeting, as a policy recommendation to council, if it comes to the committee from senior staff, if it comes from a citizen standing at the podium during audience moments, a good idea is a good idea. We shouldn't too heavily regulate where they come from, or reject it because it didn't come during the planning process last year. You know, just, the plans are important. I totally agree with everything Carrie said. And we go through these processes because they're legally required, and they're also a good way to do business. But a good idea will pop up, as you've heard about it, offline, somewhere else might have come to you in the show. I think everybody has a good idea. It almost felt like we were going to discriminate against them based on who had it, didn't give them credit.
And Laura, you want to add one?
Yeah, I, I think I first want to thank Phil for that comment, because I think that's very important. So I'll give him another couple of seconds of airtime, so people can let that one sink in. But then I, I did want to comment about the comprehensive planning situation and how that impacts council members. We put an item into the comprehensive plan at a very, very, very preliminary level. We've got no idea what the design would be when it comes back to us, anything. It's just, it's not, I don't see it as permission to go do this project no matter what. I see it as permission to start looking at this project and see what you can put together for us, and come back to us and touch base. And it's, I feel like it's the start of the process. I don't want to get in a situation where our starting the process is also a final decision in the process. So if I were supportive of a farmer's market, and then I found out that the proposal, when it comes back, is actually to build a farmer's market, which occupies all of civic field or something, I, I would not want my initial approval of pursuing a farmer's market to bind me to the eventual outcome of the process. So I just want to make that clarification. And then, finally regarding development agreements, it looks like we have some research to do, because I'm remembering that development agreements came to council, and I'm also remembering that incentive zoning came to council, and I'm remembering that there was not a strong consensus, and I, I simply remember there were concerns from everybody about development agreements, and that a couple of council members did want to consider incentive zoning. So now that we know it's in the works, maybe we can go back and, sorry, council assistant, check and see what to be the history of council, action averting development agreements has actually been, rather than relying on our, our notice of it. But I think there were some serious concerns raised.
I think there were concerns, I don't think we ever voted though, but we, that was during the Greens, Green Labs, University of Washington Green Lab, I'm just filling in the history. That was during the presentation, along with development agreements, form-based code, and incentive zoning, all of that came about. But I don't think there was ever a decision one way or another.
Yeah, I think it's okay with the council president, it would be really cool if the council assistant would check that out first.
Yeah, but it was, it was, I think, I know Michael Plunkett was still on council, so it's going back a few years, you know.
If I could take it back to the bigger picture for a moment. And Jones had something that I'm very curious about, because your comment, Joan, was that you did not perceive that it's the mayor's role to bring forth a policy recommendation.
Policy, yes. Not ideas, not good ideas, but policy.
And I, I didn't hear anybody else say that the mayor's role is to bring forth policy, but he, because it's only council that can approve policy. So I didn't hear anybody say that, that they could do that. And maybe I missed, maybe I didn't catch it. But, but I did hear people say that, and I said this, I do think it's important for the mayor to bring forth recommendations to the council for us to respond to it. And Laura clarified that we could act to it, because that was a good clarification, that we could act to it. Now, so what I need to hear from you, do you agree with that or not agree with that?
Well, what, I, I think this is kind of a cart before the horse thing. You know, I, this is my third year on council, and we have not done what Jim has recommended, is set three or four very clear policy and legislative goals for the year, accomplishable ones. So what I found myself doing is trying to get information about the tunnel and the alternative study, and spending innumerable hours just trying to figure out what this is about, and how that fits into our comprehensive plan, and how it fits into the plan of what our future is. And, and the whole, same thing with Harbor Square, you know, it was a major change we were being asked to make and incorporate into the comprehensive plan. So what I'm saying is that I think that a lot of this could be addressed by council, coming up with clear policy directives for the year, that are accomplishable. So if development agreements are one thing we want to accomplish this year, you know, because you said they've been tossed around for a lot of time, then we should come to agreement that that's what we want to be done, that that's one of our priorities, and for the year. And we're not doing this.
But I, I guess I, I don't feel my question got answered.
Okay.
So here's my question. My question is, does the mayor have the opportunity and right to bring forward policy recommendations to council?
Only if it fits within the context of what we've already decided. And again, if he's part of that, that, I, I think we could include the mayor as part of that, as elected officials, but we should be setting a legislative agenda and a policy. And it should be based on the comprehensive plan. So your question really, again, is cart before the horse. I mean, if we had made decisions like that, if we had made, then if he brings something that's consistent, or maybe outside of that, for us to address, because it seems like it could be addressed urgently, urgently, yeah. But I, I don't see that that's appropriate right now, because it just distracts us. And then we go running off on this, you know, alternative study, and are we going to seek funds for a tunnel under the railroad tracks to resolve the ferry and, and the railroads problem? So that's why I'm, I'm saying we can't.
But I think that, I think we're talking, in my mind, we're talking about two different things. So the initial thing is that you're saying, what I hear you saying, is that the council should have its priorities set, and that we expect the mayor only to bring recommendations around those priorities, is what I hear you saying.
That would be, yes, for the year. And then if there's something that is more of a long-term issue, that we could, you know, start working on as maybe being a policy for the next year?
And my, just so you know, my position, my position is that, though I agree with that, that we should have those, you know, five or six things that are priorities. But I fully expect the mayor to be thinking about other things as well, you know, because he's a human, and that's a role, I think, the role the mayor plays. And if he feels that he needs to bring a policy recommendation that's not within those confines, then he has every right to do that. Now, we have every right to amend it, or vote it down, or do whatever, but I still think he has the right to bring it to the table.
Well, and if I could bring an example forward, this is a digress. Haynes Wharf, we would have never had a policy set had it not been for Phil Williams, I think, with the mayor, to talk about contracting, you know, we need to put a contract. And so I mean, that, that suggestion came from them, and then we set the policy. And like I said to them.
Yeah, I think there's definitely room for that, just because of the reasonable use clause that.
Right, I mean, so I mean, sometimes things, sometimes things happen that we get more information on, and then we tell them, okay, we want, like with the reserve, I mean, when we came, when I first came with finance, there was no policies. So we put reserves together, we made sure it reconciled, I mean, we did different things. So I mean, we told staff, or we suggested to staff, and then they came back to us with those different items. So I think I'm, I'm kind of a little bit concerned that if we set this, like, you know, we tried to do our top six when we did our priority planning, but to me, sometimes things will come, like, let's say we have Highway 99, farmer's market, year-round, or whatever, let's say we have three items, but sometimes things will happen where we'll have to really push things aside and figure that out.
Yeah, and I agree with that, but I think that the problem is that we haven't set a clear year's agenda, what's accomplishable, and then the overall, you know, the more long-term things.
Right, which we're trying.
So that's what I'm, that it'll, it, it's much easier to accept changes or integration of policy if we clearly have our goal set, that what we're going to focus on.
You know, Shane, Dave, Laura want to jump in? Let me just say, what I hear so far is you have policy documents, as Carrie said, that provide guidance to the administration from the legislative branch. You have, as Joan has been very articulate about, let's have a council legislative agenda. I'll just add that from my own experience, those are not done in a vacuum. I've never seen a city that isn't involved, the mayor, putting that together. At least see some confirmation from her or him. Then you've got, as Tom said, ideas that might come from developers, they could come from other government agencies, like a port or the county or whatever. And then, again, you've got ideas that might even be generated And then, again, you've got ideas that might even be generated by staffers and or director where they somehow find their way into the councils, at the council table or the mayor's proposal. So just to say that there's ideas to it from a number of different sources. I'm just kind of pointing that out because that's, I think, one of the points that's come up in the last few minutes. And Shane, I saw your hand up, and then Laura, so let me just jump in.
Yes, well, that summary makes sense to me. I was wondering.
Well, I'm sorry, Sarah, but I pointed to Shane to call my attention.
I should have called her first.
I would suggest one thing about work sessions. Because I do think that work sessions are really important and really useful and can make regular meetings go more smoothly because people have had a chance to digest, figure ideas or have discussion before taking votes. And I would suggest that you think even about having two work sessions instead of just one. And then possibly, then if you have two work sessions instead of two regular meetings, alternative that whatever point makes sense. But then those meetings will have already benefited from discussion and broader knowledge and time to think about things. So that's something else to consider.
Do you want to think about that? There's like one more.
I'd really like to say so, okay. I'd like to know when we're going to get to your bullet point. Founder number three.
What do you expect it to be?
Yes. Well, it's just like, it must be done around noon.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at the clock.
I'm starting in the council at this point, in theory.
But let me, since Laura, I raise your hand, and you, Laura, and then we'll come to that question.
Okay, it was just a quick idea because the annual work plan concept probably isn't going to work. An annual work plan with monthly updates or adjustments might have more chance of success. So maybe somebody who knows of some other city who's doing something clever on this line can acquire one for us and see how they do it. But there's another distinction that might be made too between your agreed action items and your things that are in the process. So, you know, we can maybe use that second Tuesday committee at the poll to have a monthly review of what's moved on the action list and what we're still thinking about. And then people whose projects have been solved for some time can at least get an update as to where that project is and why it's not able to move yet. So it's just a thought.
Is that the extended agenda that all of you were talking about last week?
No, the extended agenda really just is, if it's populated, will at least tell us, let's say we know there's something in the works, like the shoreline master plan, the extended agenda will at least tell us when we can expect it to come back because you're an element of the crew.
Okay, let's watch the next question.
Oh, okay. I guess there's two or three issues that are kind of intertwined. They're a concern to me when I say that, probably strong concern from the staff also. And it's part of what I had hoped we would get to as part of this process, but I don't think we're getting there. So I want to get the issues out in front again, not necessarily to be solved today, but acknowledge the fact that we still haven't gotten to whatever I think it is, some of the ideas we were trying to work towards. And the first one is, and intertwined with the second one, but I'll start first, is we need to establish feeling of trust. The staff simply does not feel as though they are trusted, purely. Now, there are exceptions, there are times when certainly trust is there. But I think too often, and I think it was Jim that mentioned this way back towards the start of this session, and I'm probably rephrasing it, but I think I understood what he was talking about. Oftentimes, staff is asked for a report. And sometimes it's based on fact, sometimes it's based upon opinion. Either one should be accepted as true. Too often, if council members don't appreciate the answer, then they don't trust it on that issue. And that's quickly where trust breaks down because the staff immediately responds to, well, my God, I just did the best job I could telling people what I really thought. And now I'm told, well, that can't be true. And that sort of situation happens more than you might think. It's gotten better, but there's too often public embarrassment in public meetings directed at staff. And that's simply not acceptable to me. We've gotten better, I want to emphasize that, I just said it twice. But it's not acceptable either in committees or poll meetings to go after staff. It's not acceptable to go after staff in the press. They are professionals hired to bring expertise in their field. And you may not like the answer, but it's still their opinion or just opinion or their opinion based upon fact. And we need to establish that that's true and that we should trust what they say. Tie into that, and I think perhaps a portion of one that overlaps with two, is I was very hopeful at the beginning, as I think I told you, Jen, in our private interview, that I was hopeful we could come away from this process with a better understanding of the difference between administration and legislative policy. Because it is constantly blurred, whether it's through, and I hate this term, but I'll use it, through the efforts to micromanage certain issues. Or the other piece is sometimes just fairly well-established lines are blurred. We've got a couple of recent incidents where I suddenly get a report back that a council member or two has talked to staff below the director level and have something, some initiative started or a request without coming to me and say, is it okay if X happens? By the council. Because I thought, and I think, we have well-established practice, that beyond the director level, we shouldn't have a lot of interaction asking what we're level staff or what do you think or would you be willing to do this? I think you can do that, but you come through me first. And I'd simply like to reinforce that as a principle that the council can agree to. Because when you find out incidents like this, you end up having to, and as I oftentimes tell staff, no, we spend 30% of our time playing the defense. And that's not the way you get the work of the city done. You need to be working on ideas that move the city forward, not figuring out why the council members talking to the staff member and asking them to do something. I've talked to some of those. But I want to go back and talk about the fact that in some way, we've got to, as a group of elects along with staff's understanding, we've got to separate the difference between the administration's responsibility and the council's responsibility. It's been acknowledged that I'm the only full-time elected and I don't expect or shouldn't expect the council members to do more than think of flying it, excuse me, to another 30,000-foot level, rather than trying to get down to the 12-foot level. We, as long as we continue to mire ourselves, and well, what about this check for $12.50, you have to assume it was a legitimate expense and not question everything. Staff spends, and staff jump in here anytime you want to. You spend an extraordinary amount of time trying to answer staff questions because they are unrelenting and too often deal at the 12-foot level instead of the 30,000-foot level. The last thing I, this is kind of the heart of trying to work together. Too often, I think, a big idea or even a medium-sized idea comes forward, either driven by council or by the administration, that issues are prejudged before the meeting. And we've got to find a way, as several of you said, to listen, to listen to all sides, including myself. But we simply need not to prejudge issues. We need to make decisions based upon the information that's presented. And too often, and I think all of us would agree, we side with them, that oftentimes we bring an issue forward and we already know what the vote's going to be. Staff, anything else you want to jump in with? Here, comment on something I've forgotten that I know is of concern to us.
Okay. I am just going to point out, we only have 15 minutes left. One of the questions I have, or maybe one of the thoughts I had, is that when you talk about council not trusting staff. I think that as we looked at the ground rules before you came today, you did talk about, and it's on the agenda as well. If these ground rules were extended to include all of you, would that help to improve trust and respect? And maybe they're not quite adequate, maybe based on what you're saying, additional ground rules need to be added. But I think part of the discussion about what is a high-performing team, whether these different ground rules are an attempt to elevate trust and respect on part of everybody for everybody. So that's just one thought I have. The issue that you're raising about 50,000 foot versus 12,000, I was thinking that as you all started to define goals and responsibilities, you would have to get there today too. Although it does seem like it's a very lengthy, difficult conversation. And I kind of wonder if we could easily dispense of the point you brought up about council not going below the level of a director to ask staff people to do things. I mean, I don't know if there's anybody at the council who would disagree with the idea that if you have something, you go to Dave or you go to the directors, but you don't start managing or directing by lower-level staff people?
I guess I've recently done it in the context of, I think, Rob and, because he's worked so much on an issue I was asking about, and Jerry Schuster. But I always look a copy to the department director, unless I got the wrong director was. I might have copied you on Jerry's name instead of copying Phil's. But I kind of thought we understood that, you know, because sometimes the director isn't the person. Phil will often defer to Jerry on a drainage question or something. And so I would not have considered it odd to ask Jerry to talk to me about rain gardens, but I would cc Phil in to that request so that the director has the option to say, no, I'm not spending my staff time that way. I mean, is that okay or is that not what we're going?
And I agree and disagree with parts of that. I certainly am a defer to Jerry, but I'd like to do that on my own. So if you send me that email and ask a question about rain gardens, if I happen to know the answer, which it tends to actually, you know, takes place, but sometimes I don't. I'm going to be offline talking to Jerry or I may authorize him to send you an email and send certain things or whatever. I think that might be a better way to do it. I'm not picking on that example, but just.
No, that's why you had it as an example.
It was just fun, but I think this is a general principle. I prefer to do it that way because there are times when there's conversations going on between council members and even though their key staff members and incredibly good, you know, staff members that know what they're talking about, I would still plug them in the process because I might have a slightly different idea. And I don't want to have to catch it. You may copy me on that email, I may be gone for two days and a response gets sent back to you that, you know, I would agree to a different response. So I would rather do it that way, just since you asked. I would want to slow off the process.
And then there was Dr. Jerry, it turns out to be something that would be the person to talk to.
I think if you just sent me an email saying, I need, I would like to know the follow-up. And I'm going to be looking at your subject line if it's about rain gardens. I know pretty well who I'm going to go talk to about that. But I just like that opportunity.
So, again, Adrian.
I want to respond to what the mayor recently said about trusting the presentations of the staff. And I would like to just explain that for me, if I get an agenda memo that isn't complete and it says, you know, presentation at meeting, that's not helpful. If I get an agenda memo that is basically a sales pitch and only one point of view that isn't balanced, what I've been looking for is something that will be balanced, not just one point of view, but the pros and the cons and the evaluation of unintended consequences. And many times, the fiscal impact, that line is not even filled out. That happens with most of the agenda memos. So what I would ask is if you want us to have a better acceptance of what staff is presenting, I'm asking the staff to give us all the information about just one bias way.
Two things, first off, again, Dean, Dave, I agree with you, this is like three times today.
I won't tell it.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about it. I do think, and there has been ever since I've been on council, this blurred line of whose responsibility for what and who can tell somebody what to do. And I know I've conveyed this today, but I've conveyed this to most of council periodically, that we need to have this ironed out about who's responsible to do what and who's not. Because I find it very difficult and I feel very sorry on two things. First off, to staff, when they're told how to do their job or what to do in their job. And to council, for feeling frustrated enough that they think they need to do this because stuff isn't moving in a, in a direction quickly enough for, you know, to meet the needs of the council. So I think, I think that really does need to be defined out much further than what we've said today. That being said, I'm sorry, I have an appointment pre-scheduled about a month ago that I have to leave out the door. But I would like to say that I hope you guys can talk about after I'm gone, the need to extend Jim's contract. I'm not spoken with Jim, he's not suggested this to me. I don't even know if he's willing to do this.
Yeah, he's really hot.
But I think, I think we've hit, we've pulled the roof off of this house, but we still need to go down the stairs and look at the different floors. And I'm sorry that we didn't assume, or we assumed before that this would be much more concise than it really is to dig down to. But I would encourage you folks that are here to discuss the possibility of continuing Jim's contract into the future. Again, I apologize for the need to go.
Can I, can I, can I piggyback off, because I have to go too, because my brother needs to go on a cruise ship. He's probably having a panic attack right now if I still agree. Sandy, if you could send out chapter 1.02 to all council members that talks about council responsibilities and things like that. And then also, if, I don't know if we have this handbook available, but there's a mayor or council member handbook. If you can send that out to everyone, maybe, that would be very helpful. Like I said, this last year, I put together a little, I didn't know you didn't have one last year, put one together this year for future council presidents so that they understand their roles and responsibilities and all the different codes and stuff. But I too, I agree, I think we're, we're going to cut things off. And I know you've already spent many hours over your contract. So if you want the PSP to look at that again, to extend so that we can finish this process, I would be in favor of that as well. And I know we can't make decisions during meetings, but we really didn't even get to the nuts and bolts about the council and the mayor and the council and its directors and the council, you know, there's still, there's kind of that area that's been left off, which is item, you know, five and six and seven. So, anyway, I got to go too.
I might make a suggestion based on Diane's and Adrian's comments and if it's the interest of the whole council and the mayor as well, that maybe strong, Adrian, who are the original council members that interviewed Jim and myself, maybe work with you to try to figure out what the next best steps might be and how much time, when, the increments of time, and try to come up with a proposal back to the council for that. And probably sooner than later, so we don't lose the traction that we've gotten to now. And probably sooner than later, so we don't lose the traction that we've gotten to now. But I'd suggest that as a follow-up step.
Take me out of the equation though for a minute, please. What do you think your next steps? Like, for example, I was sitting here, and when I was listening today, I was thinking, "Well, these ground rules aren't particularly to build trust and respect." So, and we haven't even talked about them today. We were scheduled to. But like, I wonder, for example, could the staff, the directors, go away? Look at this. Think about, okay, these aren't really helpful for the seven elected officials who are in the council. But there are a couple that we would recommend adding that would get at some of the things that Dave's talking about. I think that thanks to what Dave said, Laura's question, Phil's response, there's some clarity on how far into the bureaucracy, the organization, council members should really go in terms of looking for answers to questions or providing direction or whatever. But it sounds like, and I guess I'm looking for like a concrete tool, I think it is, like this cultural standard of ground rules, to be able to give some framework for the discussion about trust. And it still sounds like there's something to be talked about regarding the 30,000-foot level versus a 12,000-foot level versus a 12-foot...
No, 12-foot, no, I think, yeah, not 12, yeah, so.
And just one other point that you made, I have to give the council some credit. Because last week, I think you all did talk too about listening better and not just listening for the sake of listening, but listening to learn. And maybe to take it so far as, let's not go into discussions with our old prejudices and we come out of them with the same prejudice. But I do think you're trying to also explore how do you listen and learn from each other? And therefore, maybe that does result in changing opinions. So. Strom?
I think at least, well, I think this would have long-term effects too. But a lot of the issues just seem to be structural. I think the idea of more work sessions is a big deal. And I think the idea of having eight days instead of three days to review a council packet, so we're kind of putting packets a week in advance together so we're not just looking at them over the weekend. I think those are a couple of issues that would be pretty easy to implement and would pay dividends in kind of the 12-foot versus... Because we could ask a couple at 12-foot levels at a work session and not have to email staff if that's, if we have specific work sessions. So I think at least on some of those communication issues, I think structurally we can address that. And see if that moves us down the path. So I, you know, I think we can maybe suggest that to the council president and the mayor to coordinate that change.
And I just think Laura reminded me of those 15 brainstormed ideas. A couple of them have actually come up today. I'm sorry that we didn't share them with everyone. But those are still, then to look at and have a conversation about themselves. Dave?
Strom, I just wanted to respond. I'm agreeing with your first point. The second point would be, we can talk amongst our staff members. But to get agenda items and agenda eight days ahead of time will be very tough to do because we're oftentimes dealing with issues up until the Wednesday staff meeting, trying to decide if something is in fact ready to go. And while it may not be an emergency, it's one that the staff has been working on. I just, we're talking eight days ahead of time. And again, we talked to staff about it. It would take a change in culture as well as logistics to make that happen. But we can have that conversation.
And maybe it's like the things that hit consent and that are kind of budgetary, maybe those can be that kind of shorter-term. But the bigger issue, when we have a, and maybe it's just the study sessions that take care of that, but...
Dave, I think it's worth getting back to the discussion. So just take a step back, have a discussion. And the answer may be, boy, we just can't do it. But the answer may be, oh, well, some things we can.
That's why I'm committed to have a discussion.
So I'm not so sure exactly where that leaves us. And put together, as I've done on the other two workshops, a summary for you highlighting some of the, not that you really need to agree, other than the idea of having work sessions for the council, maybe the second Tuesday of every month.
I think those ground rules are going to be good. I think, you know, that sets a framework. And if we all committed that framework, then we remind ourselves of that framework. And I think that's good.
And since the council didn't change those, why don't they send the revised versions of each to everybody? But maybe partly in his, or specifically or precisely, it's with that question of can this help the directors, you know, since we brought you all under the umbrella of the large team, would that help in terms of establishing a rebuild in trust and respect? Scott?
Before you ask a question, how, what the next steps potentially could be. And I hear some questions about council saying, "The agenda is in the halls." Because one of my experiences, you know, which I will speak freely about, is we would have work sessions specifically for council to discuss the priorities of the operation, priorities of each hall and then capital. And they would actually have this session, or it would be maybe two or three sessions, where they'd actually identify those priorities and they actually place a vote. They could be allowed 30 points for each section, policy, operations, and capital. A couple of things that we're benefit from that is it was done over a year. So that way, we staff, the mayor, the district committee incorporated some of those priorities and know how we conduct the business. And then one other point that Shane often made you mention is the work sessions. We all talk about elevating that trust. Trust doesn't happen when we have debate. Debate actually causes more distrust of one another. One of the benefits, I see we have work sessions in a month. Phil had two work sessions in a month. It allows staff to, in the council, to actually talk about these and discuss things. And actually grow awareness about the topics at hand. And I just can't help but the importance of that because that's where trust starts, communicating, talking about things. For that, I've got a line to say about that.
Okay, we're leaving with some dating participles. Again, I'll send you the summary of this, trying to highlight areas that still need to be looked at, which are many. Maybe I'll would try in the summary to say, here's some of the strategic questions I think you're still asking. And then you can decide how you want to handle it from there. And I do say to the council, the 15 ideas that now have been mentioned periodically throughout today, you know, I think they are, I'm not going to say they're all great or that you should adopt them all, but they were all legitimate to have further discussion. And from my perspective, it would be nice to bring the mayor and directors in because you had a lot of ideas about process improvements, including even the idea of getting the packets earlier. But I'll just tell you, I remember one council member said to me in my interview that a thousand pages for a council agenda packet on one meeting was like overwhelming. And did it say that the council was getting too involved in the weeds? Or does it say something else, or how do we get more time? So I think those issues all need to be talked about together, like you were just saying, Tom. So this stuff does still work out. But I appreciate today's discussion. And I also appreciate the council when you were here on it. There was much more humor than I've seen in our first couple of sessions. And so I give it a lot of credit for that too. So.